Okay, we're ready to start here. So I want to welcome everybody tonight to our meeting. And we'll have a roll call by our city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The record shall reflect that all members are present.
Okay, the next thing, we're going to have a pledge of allegiance. And I guess I'll lead it tonight. So please, everyone, rise. I begin, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, and I'd like to take a moment of silence to honor the victims in the attack of San Bernardino. And our hearts go out to the families of the victims. And we offer our condolence to all of those affected by this tragedy. And after we take a moment, then I'll have an invocation by Bill Raccord, member of our Kiwanis group. Okay, Bill.
... One of the mayors for covering and protection of the city of the residents and the residents and staff. ... And the residents of the city. As issues are discussed tonight and plans are made, provide your guidance and continue to remove obstacles and provide resolutions. Prayers for unity, cohesiveness, and a common purpose for the greater good. May we be good stewards of our resources for the betterment of our community. And as always, may we be a light upon the hill. Amen.
Thank you. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Boyne Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Boyne Sanitation District Ordinance Next is our approval of the agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. At the request of the applicant PH1, which is the Phillips Street Annexation and Reorganization is being removed from the agenda, this item will be brought back at a future meeting and will be re-noticed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next thing, we have a presentation by our Moonlight Cultural Foundation, supporting the productions of 2015. And so, oh, I forgot. Close session with our city attorney first. He'll bring us out of our closed session that we had today.
Thank you. The council did meet in closed session on item CS1 on this evening's closed-session agenda. There was no action, and there is nothing to be reported.
Thank you. And then, now, next, we'll do our presentation by our Moonlight Cultural Foundation, supporting the productions of 2015. And so, oh, I forgot. Close session with our city attorney first. He'll bring us out of our closed session that we had today.
Thank you. The council did meet in closed session on item CS1 on this evening's closed-session agenda. There was no action, and there is nothing to be reported.
Thank you. And then, now, next, we'll do our presentation by our Moonlight Cultural Foundation, supporting the productions of 2015. And the Moonlight Cultural Foundation Executive Director, Toria Watson, and Foundation President, Jane Mitchell, are going to do that. And actually, I'm going to have all of our council members come down at that time.
I just want to thank the council very much for allowing us to have our Moonlight Youth Theater Holiday Stars come in ahead of time with our Christmas carols. My name is Toria Watson. I am the executive director of the Moonlight Cultural Foundation here in Vista. I would like to introduce my board president, Jane Mitchell, our treasurer, Lee Covell, our board member, Gary Kiwano, and board member Jeff Pashby, that are with me this evening. It's the sole mission of our nonprofit to support the Moonlight Stage Productions' amazing performances at the Moonlight Amphitheater. We believe that every great city has a cultural destination, and for the city of Vista, that is the Moonlight. The Moonlight has an amazing capacity for bringing people together. I've seen that. This is my first year, and it was just overwhelming for me to see families, individuals, friends. It was a filled house. It's just a beautiful place to connect. It's our goal to preserve the city's jewel for future generations because we believe that theater is for everyone and that it does not begin and end with the rise and fall of the curtain. In 2015, the Moonlight Cultural Foundation provided over $254,000 in marketing support and $45,000 to support specific requests such as orchestra-quality instruments, actor in orchestra subsidies, and gas stipends. In addition to that, tonight, on behalf of the board of directors, our individual donors, corporate sponsors, and members, we would like to present a check to the city of Vista for $177,000 to maintain quality productions and the incredible experience that is our Moonlight. Together, our total support for 2015 was $481,615.
Thank you. I love it. Okay, so we're going to do a photo. So is it okay to be all back here? All back here? Should we all hold the check here? Everybody get in. Is it too high? Do we need to? Okay, okay. I'd like to have the council remain down here if they would. Okay. So I'd like to have everybody remain down here, our council, so that we can take the opportunity to recognize two of our long-term employees that will be retiring this month.
Mayor?
Yes?
If I could, sorry. Well, we have the Moonlight Board and Toria here. They wanted to talk about the kindness meter real quick.
Oh, yeah. I missed it. Well, come on and talk about it.
This is another really special opportunity for the Moonlight Cultural Foundation with our board member support and the support of their bosses that, you know, allow them to work with us and put their good resources and power, you know, to good use on our board. Carlton Lund has donated a wonderful kindness meter that's part of the kindness corridor, and it extends up in Carlsbad, and Vista is the only outside area to receive one of these donated meters that will help us fundraise all year long for our program. So I'll leave it to Carlton to explain a little bit of that, but we want to thank him very much for that.
Great. Thank you. This is pretty exciting. I'm from the Carlsbad area, and this is really a nice facility. Congratulations. I'm going to call Matt Hall when I get home tonight. Wonder what is this? This is perfect. So I'm really joyful. We just had the moment of silence, and I think, what do we need the most right now? I think we need a little kindness, don't we? And there is no small act of kindness, and that's something that has intrigued me for the last 15 years, but I finally put it to play. This meter is solar-powered. It's provided by IPS Group. It's a fabulous San Diego company that I've kind of partnered with because it's U.S.-made, it's made here, and every single dollar can go into a cause. And Carlsbad and Vista has something in common. Neither of us have any parking meters whatsoever. We only have kindness meters. So give everyone a hand for that one. So it takes quarters, and I want to share with you, there's two major things I want to get handled for this meter and the thought process. First of all, the Moonlight Amphitheater is a regional resource. It's a world-class resource, and I am thankful I can take my grandkids there. It is wonderful. So I can see that as they enter, that kids can learn about giving a quarter, or they can take their mom or dad's or probably grandparents' credit card, and you can put a dollar at a time and keep moving it up. We tested it in Carlsbad for the Charitable Foundation and so on, my really, really heart-filled charities, and what we found is people like to do it anonymously. They like to feel about giving, but if we can teach these kids about giving, we will win. So, anyway, it's here. It'll be amphitheater productions. There will be a permanent stand, and it'll be right by the restroom, so that's going to be a beauty area. It's a perfect spot. I don't give a damn. But God bless you all. Thank you for the opportunity to promote kindness, and I applaud all of you for accepting this gift. Thank you to you.
Do you want to put it out, you want to put it outside in the lobby? Do you want to take that and put it out? Somebody, is it heavy?
No, 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 Gary, it's heavy. My right arm is two inches bigger than my left arm, and two inches.
Oh, he has a kindness pocket. Okay, let's see. Where was I? It seems like I'm doing everything twice tonight. Okay, so we're all going to stay here and take the opportunity to recognize two of our long-term employees who are retiring. So first, I'll do Rick Minnick, who's our fire chief, and he's going to come up here. I see him back there. So we have. We hate to lose you, Rick.
Nice news.
Here, we have a letter of appreciation. I'm going to read this. "Congratulations to Fire Chief Richard C. Minnick, who is retiring after 34 years," and he doesn't look old enough, does he? "After 34 years of dedicated service to the city of Vista. On November 16, 1981, Rick was hired as a firefighter-three in the fire department. He was promoted to fire captain in 1987 and promoted to fire battalion chief in 2005. In 2010, Rick was promoted to deputy fire chief, and October 5, 2012, Rick was appointed fire chief. Rick was one of the youngest employees to ever be promoted to the rank of captain within the city. Rick has accomplished a great deal during his tenure at the city of Vista, including the introduction of Telestaff, the fire department's automated staffing software, and the adoption of numerous standards of cover reports, helping to improve the efficiency of the department. Rick was instrumental in helping the fire department secure accreditation with the Commission on Fire Accreditation International, making Vista Fire Department one of only 217 agencies worldwide to have received this designation." That's an amazing designation. Only 217 agents all over the world have received it. "This accreditation is recognized as a universal measure of excellence in the fire service. Rick also negotiated and refined automatic aid agreements with neighboring jurisdictions, enabling more efficient use and deployment of the fire department assets, helping to improve response times and increasing resident satisfaction with life safety services. The Vista City Council offers its sincere appreciation for Rick's dedication and commitment to the city of Vista, commends him for his 34 years of invaluable service to the Vista community, and wishes him well in his future endeavors and his retirement." So congratulations, Rick.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Come back in the middle. We have to do a fire. We're okay, we're okay. I'm good. Okay. You're welcome. Oh, there's more money. More money for the kindness meter out there. Okay, now, the next is, we're going to have Bill Fortmiller, and he's here. Yay. All these guys are retiring. who is retiring after 24 years of dedicated service to the city of Vista. On June 24, 1991, Bill was hired as a park superintendent, and on July 6, 2007, he was promoted to Assistant Director of Recreation Services. And on July 1, 2013, was promoted to Director of Recreation and Community Services. Bill is renowned for his jovial nature and excellent memory." Still at your age, huh? "As a lover of the arts and theater, Bill was a perfect leader for the city's burgeoning public arts program and top-caliber, award-winning musical theater program at the Moonlight Amphitheater. Bill is also known for his ability to quote notable movie lines at the drop of a hat." Do you have any for tonight?
I'd better not.
You'd better not, okay. Yeah. "Bill has accomplished a great deal during his tenure at the city of Vista, including the creation of additional park space and recreational programming at the Linda Rhodes Recreation Center and Rain Tree Sports Arena, providing new opportunities in underserved areas of the city. Bill was also instrumental in maintaining strong relationships with many of the community partners that provide integral services to the Vista residents, such as the Vista Unified School District, the Moonlight Cultural Foundation, and the Alta Vista Botanical Gardens, among many others. The Vista City Council offers its sincere appreciation for Bill's dedication and commitment to the city of Vista, commends him for 24 years of invaluable service to the Vista community, and wishes him well in his retirement and future endeavors." So congratulations, Bill.
Thank you.
Okay. And there are 12, actually, 12 items on our consent calendar. The recommendations on the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the clerk secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the remainder of the calendar. So with that, I'll ask first the council if they have anything they want to remove. Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to remove C5, please.
Okay, anyone else? Let me see. Do I have any? No slips? Okay, so that would be the only one. So then I would look for, oh, Councilmember, Deputy Mary Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll make a motion to, for the rest of the consent calendar.
Okay. Do I have a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay. Just cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So the next thing that we will discuss is item C5. Did you want to, would you like a staff report?
I don't think I need a staff report, but thank you. I just wanted to talk about, on paragraph 2, expense and reimbursement guidelines, it's 6 of 15, so it would be item 2D, where it says, "The city will not pay for lodging at conferences occurring within 50 miles of City Hall or within the limits of San Diego County." There have been a couple of times where that was necessary, and I've paid out of pocket, and I don't know if my colleagues have either, but it's very difficult when you're in the outskirts of the county and you have to come home and, you know, 10, 11 o'clock at night, and then you have to be back out there again at 7:00 or 8:00 in the morning. So I would like for us to be able to use the previously approved 2,500 travel expense to cover this expense. So I would move that we accept this policy with the change to 2D, where it would strike out the word "not," and it would say, "The city will pay for lodging at conferences occurring within 50 miles of City Hall or within the limits of San Diego County." So I would move that we would approve it with that change.
Councilmember Campbell?
I agree, Councilwoman Rigby, that that change needs to be made. However, also, if you turn to page 5 of 15, the newly-added section at the bottom of section 1 under section F, that would need to be removed as well, and I would support that because then it covers travel period using the budgeted amount previously designated. So...
What number is that one you're looking at?
In the center of page 5 of 15, where it goes into travel outside of a 50-mile radius and the limits of San Diego County is reimbursed and covered. So those two kind of tie together. So it's 1, it's below 1F.
And the new language in 1F specifically deals with the use of reimbursement for a personal vehicle?
Right.
Okay.
So I would strike that clause and 2D, since the amount is already, it's budgeted and usable under the prior policy. This was just a merging of two policies. So I would support your motion, but would ask if you're amenable to including the 50-mile, just eliminating the 50-mile and within San Diego County clause altogether for simplicity purposes.
Deputy Mary Aguilera?
I think I agree with all this, except for, this does, does this only apply to council members, though, or is this all employees?
This policy's just council members itself, yeah.
Okay. Then I, yeah, then I agree with it. I'll second that motion.
The one thing I wanted to point out, though, on 1F, it's stating that travel outside of a 50-mile limit will be reimbursed. Are you looking for something other than that from a personal vehicle standpoint?
I would just say, travel while on official city purposes.
The question I have with that is, maybe the city manager or city attorney could address, but don't we get an auto allowance for that, and then we already get travel expenses outside of 50 miles?
So you don't currently have an auto allowance listed, but outside of 50 miles, you would be reimbursed for your travel.
Right. Okay. Well, with the changes, Councilwoman Campbell, I would agree to that.
So you're deleting that whole, that whole paragraph there? So if somebody had to drive 100 miles or something, they would not get reimbursed then?
No, they would.
They would?
Right. It's just currently, this is saying that if you travel within the county limits of San Diego, so I know there have been events very far distant, that there would be no reimbursement under this proposed policy.
Oh, under this one proposal? So you just would strike this?
Just striking that out.
You'd be reimbursed for whatever you did.
Right.
Okay.
So as you know, each council member has a designated travel budget at this time, so...
Are you okay with that? Okay. Then, let's see. Councilwoman Rigby, did you have something else to say?
No, ma'am. That was it.
Okay, so I have a motion, and I have a second? Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, so then, cast your votes, please. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. So, moving along, next on our agenda are our discussion items. Items scheduled for discussion are generally require a detailed explanation by staff and an agency member input. So tonight, we have eight discussion items. It's one of those nights. The first one will be the sale of successor agency and city properties and city acquisition of property. Housing and redevelopment director John Meyer will present the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This item was continued from the November 10, 2015 council meeting. The council has had an opportunity to meet individually with Mr. Wentz to better understand the proposed transactions. An overview of these transactions are, first, Mr. Wentz's purchase of 603 South Santa Fe from the Community Development Commission for the purpose of relocating Altura Paints from 365 East Broadway. Prior to the relocation, Mr. Wentz will make a substantial renovation of the building, which will enhance, which will provide an enhancement to that section of South Santa Fe. Altura Paints will purchase the property from Mr. Wentz, which keeps a successful local business within the area. The city will then purchase 353 and 365 East Broadway from Mr. Wentz for the purpose of securing property to address future parking needs of the downtown. This action is consistent with the recommendation of the recently completed downtown parking management plan. Staff will study the benefits of moving forward with the full parking improvements now, or whether it makes economic sense to rent out the existing building until there is an increase in the demand for the downtown parking. Results of this analysis will be presented to the council at a later date. Mr. Wentz will then purchase 100 Main from the successor agency. This is consistent with the requirements of the dissolution process. Mr. Wentz's development proposal will go through the city's entitlement process and must adhere to the standards and regulations of the recently updated downtown Vista specific plan. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Okay, we have speakers. Would you like to hear the speakers first? Okay, we'll start with Jay Wentz.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
First of all, I want to thank you all again for the time that you've taken to understand the decision that's before you. Your very capable staff has made the recommendation to approve the agreements that are in front of you tonight, and our team supports that recommendation. Your favorable decision tonight has three very positive benefits, both in the short term and for the long term. Number one, a longstanding, successful business, Altura Paints, will be located, relocated to 603 South Santa Fe. We will build a nearly new building for Mr. Hutchinson, and he will end up there. And one of the big benefits of that is that Paseo Santa Fe is being envisioned and promoted as an up-and-coming area. This will likely be the nicest building in that area. So that is one really positive thing that happens from this domino effect. The second thing is you will secure long-term, permanent parking for your downtown area as you seek to revitalize it. The nearly acre site that we are proposing to sell to the city can accommodate up to 90 spaces right now if you raise the buildings, but you might decide in the short term to do something with the buildings, but eventually, you could park up to 250 cars, which should take care of your parking needs for the long term. The third, very important benefit from a favorable decision is that you finally see 100 Main developed in a way that is consistent with your stated policy goals and objectives, and that may bring up to 200 new residents and up to 12,000 square feet of commercial and retail to that site. Those folks will pour out into the downtown area on a daily basis and support the financial underpinnings of all the businesses in the downtown, as well as in Vista Village and to Paseo Santa Fe. So yes, you are paying it forward in the short term, debiting one of your accounts, but in exchange for that, you are getting an unquestionable benefit for the long time, for the long term, that will pay benefits for decades to come. The 100 Main development plan will activate the site and thereby the entire downtown area according to your specific plan update. We're not looking for any exceptions. It will also incorporate the unique attributes of the arts and culture of this marvelous little downtown area, and the building itself will speak to that art, and it may be that we have the tenants in there that will also be emblematic of the arts and culture downtown. Thirdly, it will act as a lightning rod, connecting the north, the south, the east, and the west of all of the business areas around it, as well as downtown. We would begin the entitlement process in earnest after a favorable vote tonight, and we would look forward to bringing you the design iterations, getting your input, staff's input, and doing something, coming alongside the city of Vista, that will do something very, very positive with many long-term benefits for the downtown. So we would really appreciate your support, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. If you have no questions of him, I have other speakers. Okay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Hopkins?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, and staff. My name is Kevin Hopkins, and I am the chief branding officer for Mother Earth Brew Co., a business located here in Vista, California. And we also have a retail facility down at 204 and 206 Main Street that we've been operating since 2012. Mother Earth Brew Co. is currently the sixth-largest craft brewery based out of San Diego. We service eight states, from as far west as Hawaii to as far east as Florida, and six additional countries as well, including Europe, Asia, and South America. We're a very... We're very proud to be residents of Vista and proud to be a business owner in Vista, and we appreciate having the opportunity to have a retail outlet where our consumers can come out and enjoy the brewery without actually having to go to the production facility itself. It's turned out, I think, to be a very mutually symbiotic arrangement for us in the redevelopment area, and now that it's moved on and you're getting ready to finish off that finalization of removing the rest of property, including 100 Main, it's time for that area to grow and to be able to be expanded. We're very much in support of this plan. We very much like the idea. Since the G8 development was not the right thing at the right time, we feel that this is not just a compromise, it's actually an improvement upon where that plan was and all the hard work and effort that went into it. It's capitalizing on all that experience, all that knowledge, and certainly in the investment of the many years that the city has already invested in trying to get that property moved and developed, and now it does so in a favorable and fashionable way. That lot right now is being used as overflow parking. You think it's categorized as overflow, but it really isn't. It's day-to-day parking. It's being used day in, day out. Right now, there is over 100 vehicles parked in that lot. It is part of the day-to-day business. The businesses located in that downtown district will not be able to sustain their level of growth. They certainly will not be able to increase it if they do not have the opportunity to not only maintain, but to increase parking. The district attracts folks from all over. Our businesses alone are bringing in folks from Phoenix, from Las Vegas, from Chicago just this week, just today and tomorrow. Those are people that we know are visiting us because they're scheduled to arrange business to our business where we can entertain them downtown in Vista. We do not know the number and the multitude of folks that are visiting us from all over. We attract folks not just from San Diego County, but far beyond. We very much need the additional parking, not just for our business, but for all of our brethren that are down there. As this district becomes more and more hospitality and retail-related, we certainly want all the neighbors and residents of Vista to be able to come down to utilize all the different transit areas that are available to them, whether it be light rail, whether it be Uber, whether it be walking traffic, whatever it may be. But there is a large percentage of people that want to be able to come from outside the area. They must be able to have reliable areas to park. It must be safe, it must be secure, it must be affordable, and it will allow this area to continue to develop, to continue to grow, and continue to prosper. Our only other comment would be that because we are using 100 Main along with all the other folks that are down there, that we would like to see the timing as such that the parking be developed so that we do not lose that during a development timeframe. You know, obviously, the timelines are tenuous at best, and we certainly would appreciate that the city is going to take an amount of time appropriately to take a look and see how long it's going to go through the process, and if we need to raise buildings and such, that it's done at the appropriate time. In the interim, if you use it and lease the buildings for other sublet purposes, that's perfectly fine as well. We just don't want to lose the parking in the long run. So again, thank you very much for your time. We appreciate it. Have a very good evening.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
I do. I just have a quick question for you. Do you feel that your customers will use the parking at the Broadway and Citrus location? That...
Certainly. And understanding that necessity breeds invention. And so, you know, we love to have parking closer to Main in a sense, yes, but at the same time, we have historic buildings, we have historic district. We do not want to detract and defray from that. And previous council items that looked at putting a raised parking structure behind existing frontage along Main Street also did not seem to work well, especially with the traffic flow patterns along Vista Village going to East Village Way. And so for us, we feel the best area to do it. And in looking at a neighborhood district, what is not better than to have folks be able to go through the entire district? I envision, you know, growth trees decorated with pin lights, and I envision, you know, storefront shops open bay windows that are properly illuminated, that people are walking back and forth in a great, safe area. So I feel our customers will respond to that.
Yeah. What do you think about, I hope I'm not too far off subject matter here, but what do you think about two-hour parking downtown to increase turnover in parking spaces as a solution in the long term?
I think there's a little more of a challenge with that, certainly without study to show what are the actual traffic counts and turns per each business. Our business seems to do a little bit more in the evening and on the weekends, of course. We do have a lunchtime. We open at 12 o'clock each and every day, seven days a week. But there's other businesses that rely on that daytime aspect and then the evening aspect on their own. We're not at a point that we've saturated to the point that we're excluding businesses, but as we grow businesses, additional parking, not necessarily limited parking, for us would be the right answer.
And do you feel as a business owner downtown that you'd be willing to invest in the long term in a 20-year parking plan if it was something that the city...
You know, we need to stick to the subject here of tonight, of this, this, not, we can talk about that at a later date, maybe.
Fine.
Okay?
Thanks.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor.
Tom Vogel?
Hi, my name is Tom Vogel, and I'm the same business that Kevin's in. We own a brewery in Vista. We're also building out 302 East Broadway, which is adjacent across the street from the parking lot that's being envisioned here this evening. I can't say anything better than the two previous speakers. We're definitely in favor of increased parking in downtown Vista. I think it's necessary. I think it's necessary to bring in more investment. We would love to see more investment in downtown Vista to complement what we're doing down there, and I think it's just a perfect solution for that area. We do find that parking is an issue. When we first started building out, our parking lot was full with people for Yellow Deli, and we felt really bad that we had to block all those people from parking there, and I think that they definitely need some more parking in that area, and it's a perfect spot for it, so.
Thank you. Roddy Browning?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm a new business owner here in Vista, my wife and I, and I just wanted to come out today to show that the support that I feel that we do need, more parking in the downtown area. And I think that the actual space that we're talking about here is not only beneficial to obviously the businesses with the parking, but Lincoln, the Lincoln School Park is used by a number of kids and families for, you know, from the Pop Warner to the soccer. And I think by putting more parking right across the street from that, I don't think anyone's really mentioned that, and I can't speak, the previous speakers were much better educated with what's going on, but in my opinion, because I'm a father, I think providing that parking is beneficial to the business, but it's also going to make it safer for our kids and people to utilize that park as well. And I have firsthand experience from my guests telling me that, you know, parking is an issue. So I'm just here to show support tonight and think that it would be a very good decision for you all, for not only to help my business and everyone else that's here in downtown, but also any kind of future businesses that are planning to come to Vista. If there's no parking, if parking is an issue, perhaps they wouldn't consider us for their future businesses. Thank you.
Thanks, Roddy. Cliff Kaiser?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I just want to reiterate from the November meeting, from the VBA perspective as president, that this is a win-win for the downtown community and the city as a whole to bring and make downtown Vista more vibrant. When you think about the creativeness that went into creating this solution, a three-way land swap and deal of bringing parking over to Broadway and developing 100 Main, as well as creating a place for Altra Paint to go, that is even more suited to the community and to his business than he is now, and perhaps even creating the incentive to a, an arts-industrial district on Mercantile Street. This is a win-win, like I said, for everybody, and we strongly support that you guys move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Lev Grishman?
Good evening, Mayor Ritter. Council members and staff have appeared before you on a number of occasions advocating for responsible and sustainable development in and around downtown Vista. Our firm, Tideline Partners, is a real estate development and management firm. We're passionate about making places better, and in the last year, we relocated our office from downtown La Jolla to 150 Broadway, which we redeveloped and dressed up with an inspirational mural. We're currently in the process of redeveloping 227 East Broadway, the one-day shoe repair on the corner, and are actively investing and working with the community to create a healthy and vibrant downtown. Besides being an economic stakeholder, I personally have history with downtown Vista dating back to the mid-'90s and love the culture of art, craft, and authenticity that has developed here. I'm providing this background, this context, to my comments pursuant to item D1. I support the thoughtful development of 100 Main Street, an opportunity to secure land for parking and future growth. The following are the key drivers for this support. 353 and 365, as I'll refer to, parking is strategically located for convenient access from Civic Center, alleviating congestion on Vista Village and traffic flow through downtown. Contiguous assemblage of parking is a rare opportunity that may not be available in the future. Demand for parking will continue to increase. Parking is land-banked as surface parking and can be redeveloped to fit future needs, parking garage, open public space, et cetera. As current dirt lot 100 Main takes away from the quality of the downtown experience and needs to be activated to draw people in, a thoughtful mixed-use development on 100 Main will increase onsite daytime and nighttime foot traffic and will support businesses locally and create energy. In the spirit of full disclosure, I must note that Tideline Partners and I personally have no direct or indirect interest in Mr. Wentz's company or 100 Main Street development. In fact, our firm pursued 100 Main Street for development, but could not offer the parking solution. While I have never worked with Mr. Wentz, I'm familiar with one of his successful projects, Lafayette Hotel, and I know that he was able to deliver that project through a most trying global recession. I trust that the sale, I trust that if approved, the sale, pardon me, I trust that if the sale is approved, council, staff, and planning commission will ensure that the final project embraces the principles of sustainability and healthy development, a development that enhances the character of the downtown and enriches the quality of this special place. Thank you for taking the time to consider my notes.
Thank you. Brett Schonstenbach?
Good evening, council. Brett Schonstenbach, CEO of the Vista Chamber of Commerce. Apologize for being dressed down to consecutive basketball practices that I was coaching, but I made it. The Chamber of Commerce would like to encourage you to go with staff recommendation tonight on the project for the properties in question. And I want to speak for a moment about Jay Wentz and his company. Jay and I have known each other for over 10 years. Our children were very close friends in high school, and I was very excited about four or five years ago when Jay first started talking to me about developing and the opportunity to develop in downtown Vista. As was just said, his company has done some very impressive developments and projects in the past in the county. And when he started talking about opportunities in Vista, I was excited as a downtown business and as a chamber, knowing that that quality of developer was interested in our community. He's a man of integrity, of very high character, and I'm very excited that his company has the interest in 100 Main. I think, as Cliff said, that the project is a win-win because of the swap and not losing parking by gaining a developer and gaining a mixed-use development. So the board of directors is very excited about this project. Would like to encourage you to vote in favor of the recommendation tonight and do the deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Arubay Lopez, sorry.
My name is Arubay Lopez, and I'm here to speak about an issue in particular. I was reading the exhibits, and the part that actually called my attention is the fact that, which is tonight's vote, the developer is not, does not have to do it. I mean, he's told us he wants to do it. We assume that he wants to do it, but if something happens and something happens to his health or his company, and he later decides that he doesn't want to go through it, I think that it'd be fair that either the proposal would have a requirement that 100 Main Street be developed, or that it have a clawback so that if it doesn't happen within a certain amount of time, that the city has a right to get it back. I say this because my concern is what happened with the hotel in front of the Ford, the Ford dealer. The city went ahead and tore down the hotel, and there was an agreement that Ford would build another Ford dealership in about two years, and it's been forever, and it hasn't happened. So it wasn't because Ford wasn't, doesn't want to do it, but because situations happen. So my comment here is that if we are going to vote for it, that we make it a requirement that development does happen within a certain amount of time, and if it doesn't, that the city have a right to purchase the land back. Thank you.
Did you want to say something?
Sure. Commenting on the Ford dealership in particular, Ford has another 15 to 16 months to go ahead and activate that site with another dealership, and if that doesn't happen after that, the three-year period is up in 15 or 16 months, then the city has the option to buy that property back for the $680,000 that it sold it for.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Aguilera? Whoops. I said that just when we took a drink.
Okay.
Sorry.
Caught me off guard. I thought Mr. Franklin had a question. No, I think, I think we're moving in the right direction. I feel better and better the more I hear about the project and better and better about the decision we made a ways back about the G8. I mean, unfortunately, that just didn't work out. I think this is, as Kevin said, a big improvement on the proposal that we were looking at before, and I think Jay Wentz is the right guy for this. I like that he keeps focusing on those three things, activate, arts and the culture and the connecting, because I've heard other people mention those things, too. We need to connect, we need to activate downtown, and I think this project, you know, so far what I've seen of it, is going to be able to do that. And then the other thing that was brought up today that I hadn't really thought about, I'm kicking myself, I don't know why I didn't think about it, but when my kids were involved with Pop Warner, parking was a pain in the butt down there and still is. I mean, every time I drive by and watch Pop Warner, you know, people, they have to usher cars through, and I remember when my kids were playing Pop Warner, you know, you could only be, you could just drop your kids off, then you had to drive off, and then there was nowhere really convenient to park. So I think there's going to be some other benefits, not just for our restaurants and pubs and that, that we're going to get from the parking side of it as well. And I look forward to being able to be in control of that and do something nice for the parking, for our businesses down there. But, you know, I think most importantly, I think this project is really going to just, well, not at this point, kickstart, because we've already talked about the fact that our downtown has been kickstarted already by the successful breweries, but keep the ball rolling and really take it to the next level. And I think if you know, if you knew about what his ideas are on this project, you would be in even greater favor, because I think the type of people that he's going to bring into downtown is exactly what our businesses need. So I'm going to support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Wentz, I want to say thank you very much for meeting with me. I know you met with my colleagues as well, but I appreciate all of the time you spent with me, talking me through your vision for this area, and answering all of my questions and addressing my particular concerns. And as everybody here knows quite well, over the last few years, I've been hesitant to sell this property, because I'd like to see the city keep control of it. It is a premier piece of property in the heart of Vista, and it's very important to me that what goes here reflects our community and our charm and our history. And I have talked to others about your company and looked into what you've done, and I have to say that I don't know that we could find a better developer for this property, and I am going to surprise everybody on the days, and I am going to vote to trust you, to entrust to you the continued charm and community feeling of this property, and to entrust to you that you will do the right thing and make it something to be a premier, continue to be the premier property in Vista, and to reflect the values and the character not only of Vista, but of downtown. And I do look forward to you working closely with the city on what the development will be, what it will look like, and what it will entail. So I thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
With that, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Please cast your votes. Yay, that passes unanimously, so we look forward to...
Congratulations.
Yes, our new downtown. Okay, next thing on the agenda, item D2, which is a Palomar McClellan Airport change in the flight path and noise abatement. And our assistant city manager, Ally Zimmerman, will present the staff report. And then I have one speaker.
Good evening, mayor and council members. This item is coming back before you again. On the last meeting, Councilwoman Rigby made a request for staff to draft a letter to the FAA regarding some of the noise impacts related to flights coming in, mostly in, but in and out of Palomar Airport in Carlsbad. So we've started to do a lot of research on this, and while by no means are, am I or anyone on staff becoming an aviation expert, we are learning copious amounts... on staff becoming an aviation expert, we are learning copious amounts about the different nuances and terminologies and all sorts of things that come from the Federal Aviation Administration. We had all been talking mainly about flight paths, as if that was a common terminology that the FAA uses. They really do not. They have a flight -- there are flight phases. The flight is made up of the departure procedure, the en route phase, which is referred to as a flight path, and then your arrival procedure, which is commonly called an approach as well. We have been asking the FAA if there's been any changes in the flight paths, as the residents in Vista are experiencing more noise, and they have said no. But what they haven't necessarily offered up is that there may have been a change in a flight approach, the arrival procedure. And the staff research and through documents provided from other members of the community, we did identify that in 2012, a new approach was offered for Palomar Airport that is significantly tighter. It allows for a more streamlined approach into the airport, but it may be impacting Vista residents. We're not sure yet, but it is something that we're able to identify that has a potential noise impact. The two exhibits, one showing the standard approach in along Palomar Airport Road, and then the newer, tighter flight approach, were included as exhibits to Exhibit 1. The draft letter does address that issue. It also identifies two other potential remedies to noise issues. The first would be an expansion of the noise impacts measurements procedures. Currently, the FAA only looks at the impact of the noise of aircrafts that is provided by the aircraft manufacturers. They don't identify any on-the-ground noise sampling or community polling. The FAA is currently looking at a survey. They won't say which airports they're surveying, but they are talking about expanding their noise reductions, and the letter includes a request to expand that. And then the second item is a request to reduce the acceptable noise threshold, which is currently at 65 decibels on the community noise equivalent plan. And when you go 65 decibels out from Palomar Airport, even in the projected potential flight path or airport expansion changes, you really don't impact the community of Vista. But there have been some recommendations out there from Quiet Skies Caucus from Congress and others requesting that perhaps the noise threshold be reduced to 55 decibels, which may potentially expand those contours and allow more communication between the city of Vista or Vista residents and the airport. So that is what the draft letter identifies as three potential items. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have and take any direction you would like on potential changes to the letter. Thank you.
I have -- you want to hear the speaker first? Okay. Stephanie Jackal.
Good afternoon -- or good evening, Mayor Ritter and Councilmembers. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Rigby and Assistant City Manager Zimmerman for putting this letter together. It's an excellent letter. It's a very clear statement of the problem and the experiences that South Vista residents put up with day after day after day. It's hard to believe that the FAA does not yet recognize Vista as being impacted by these overflights or approaches, as we have to call them. But we are. This letter does three things. It makes three very specific and clear requests. They're not outrageous. They're common sense, easy to do. If the requests are acted upon, it will demonstrate the overflight or approach impacts that are happening to Vista residents. And it will move the whole process toward approach relief for South Vista residents. And this same conversation is going on in many other communities across the nation. We're not the only one. But this is targeting Vista's problems with three very specific, clear requests. I really urge you, please, to approve and send the letter. Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff Kaiser.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I agree this letter is very well-written and encourage it to be sent. Thank you, Ali and staff, in developing this over the discussion that happened at the last meeting. One comment would be that the FAA has radar records showing flight approaches into Palomar Airport, or any airport for that matter. And I would recommend that you consider adding that to the letter, saying, "Give us a snapshot of the flight paths that have been used going into Palomar Airport through Vista, maybe in the month of September of 2011, 2012, 20," et cetera, to see the comparison and therefore validate the residents' concerns that, in fact, there has been a change. I can also say that, as a member of the Palomar Airport Advisory Committee, that I have asked for that same report, although the data is not as exhaustive, from the San Diego County who runs that airport. They have access to some of that data, and hopefully before the end of the year, and certainly early next year, you'll have at least a snapshot to show you what they have available to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would like to say thank you also to Assistant City Manager Zimmerman for her work on this letter, taking into all the consideration that we brought up, that Mrs. Jackal and the other group brought up, and that our concerns. I think the letter is well-written, and I appreciate it. It does, as Mrs. Jackal stated, it puts our points out there and asks for a particular response from the FAA. And so I appreciate that very, very much. And with that, I would like to move that the council approved this letter to be sent.
Could I just ask you, why -- can you guys all put your name on this letter? Why is it just from the mayor? I think it would mean more if the whole council had their names on it, because it just says, you know, it's just like I'm writing the letter.
I am perfectly happy to have it come from the council.
I think that would be -- I mean, I think that would hold more weight if it was from the council rather than -- because if it's just for me, then it has to go on my own letterhead, and it just says, you know, "From the mayor." So I think, I don't know. Hello, everybody. What do you think? I see you scratching your head.
I think the introduction says "as mayor," and it could just say "the city of Vista" or "the city council of the city of Vista," something that --
Thank you, that was my signature.
Or "as mayor," maybe "as mayor and city council," you could say that.
Something that reflects that it's --
But it could also go on the letterhead, the council letterhead.
Yes.
Rather than my personal letterhead.
That's fine with me, so I would move that we do it on that.
Is it okay with everybody?
I'll second it.
Okay. That motion passes unanimously. That brings us to our third discussion item, which is appointment of our deputy mayor. And it's time to make an appointment of a deputy mayor for a one-year term. And I would like to nominate Amanda Rigby to be our deputy mayor for next year.
I'll second it.
Councilwoman Aguilera or Deputy Mayor Aguilera?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second it. That's a good choice.
Okay. So then, if you cast your votes, please. We have two -- and we have passed this three with two abstentions. And I abstained just because I thought I'd let the council make up their mind about who they wanted to be the deputy mayor without my influence on that. So thank you so much. So congratulations, Amanda. You're our new deputy mayor for next year.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to number four, it's the annual appointments of our officials to our outside agencies. And that is, do we have any -- do we have any discussion on that, or do I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve item D4 as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera, okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes with four and one abstention. Okay, moving on to number -- discussion item number five, which is the consumer notification requirement at vehicle repair facilities of California, partial zero emissions vehicle, PZEV, extended warranty. And this is requested by Councilwoman Campbell, so I'm going to have him introduce that.
Thank you, Mayor. So this item was before the council, the last meeting, but was extended due to our very lengthy meeting, and I didn't want to add another 15 minutes to that. So I'll give you a brief history of why this item came forward. It actually involves a personal experience of mine. I own a vehicle that is a partial zero emission vehicle. Approximately 90% of all new small passenger vehicles in the state of California sold are partial zero emission vehicles, cars essentially. This occurs because the state gives a credit to those vehicles instead of what's called a zero emission vehicle. Manufacturers are given credit for producing and selling partial zero emission vehicles at a reduced credit amount. So it's a .2 vehicle credit for a PZEV to equal their required zero emission vehicle credits. So it's an exchange. The auto manufacturers sell these vehicles and provide the extended warranty coverage to ensure that during the life of that vehicle, while it's operating on the roads in the state, that all the emissions components are working up to par, the same as if it was sold today, 15 years from now. So it's a warranty that plays a critical part of ensuring that California's automobiles that are on the road are maintained and operable, excellent working condition, so that they don't have pollutants entering the air. This does not apply to diesel vehicles. It's gasoline-only. The issue comes that frequently, people have their check engine light come on the vehicle, and that's what this covers. Anytime your vehicle's check engine light is illuminated and you have a partial zero emission vehicle, it's covered under California law. It's covered by the vehicle's manufacturer's warranty. The issue arises in that frequently, when your vehicle has 60,000, 70,000 miles on it, people don't take their vehicle to the dealership manufacturer, which is the warranty center designated by law. You're going to take it because you assume that your vehicle is out of warranty. Frequently, the automobile manufacturers actually don't even put this in the handbook for the vehicle anymore. It's not in there. So there's very difficult, very limited ways for consumers to know that your vehicle is still covered under the original warranty. If you take it to an off-site auto repair location, it is not covered under warranty. It is only covered at warranty centers, which are the dealerships for that vehicle. Frequently, what will happen is a person will take that vehicle in, maybe it's the catalytic converter, maybe it's an injector, a computer for the vehicle, and it's very expensive, costly repair, generally thousands of dollars for those high-dollar parts. And the vehicle may still run fine, but it's polluting at a high level. And it won't pass smog, but maybe their smog isn't due for two or three more years. They're not going to get the repair. And what I'm proposing, and I've spoken to numerous state agencies about this, is that within the city of Vista, and this would actually, I believe, kickstart other cities in the state taking a bigger look at this issue, is that we require merely consumer notification, no remedies, no enforcement, just asking or requiring the businesses to make a posting. And if someone presents their vehicle that the check engine light is on, as the repair shops currently do, they know very readily, there's a code in the VIN number, it's very clear to see, that their vehicle is a PZEV vehicle. And upon presentation of that vehicle, they see the check engine light is on, that the consumer is notified that that repair would likely be covered under warranty if presented at a warranty center. I believe that it would enable consumers to have knowledge firsthand that their vehicle is still under warranty. This is a very complicated issue for, I think, the average consumer to be aware of, first off. And it would increase the number of repair, high-dollar repairs that are being done, without the consumer having to pay thousands of dollars out of pocket for those repairs to be completed. We're not putting an onerous regulation if this was approved on small businesses, because this is not adding additional workload to what they're already doing in terms of examining or looking at that vehicle for the customer. They would still have to pay for any diagnostic work that was done at that independent auto repair location, but -- and I did actually speak to one of the larger auto repair facilities in town, and they mentioned that they currently actually will refer people over to the dealership if it's a repair that would be covered under this warranty. However, not all of those businesses are doing that. So that's my proposal, is that we create a very simple consumer notification that enables consumers to be aware of this warranty and potentially save Vista consumers thousands of dollars on that potential automobile repair by having them presented at the warranty station. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Just briefly, to go back to why this issue came up for me, I actually had to take a auto dealership to court over performance of this warranty. So I became fairly well-versed in the nuances of the Code of Regulations on this item.
So you're just asking to have this piece of paper, like the rules posted on the wall in the dealer -- in the repair place, and then -- or maybe given this sheet of paper?
Not specifically this, because this actually covers the warranty periods for all warranties for vehicles. But the city attorney and I have had a conversation, and it would be likely fairly simple to craft a simple language that says to the effect that if your vehicle's check engine light is illuminated, which is what it says in the Code of Regulations, any related, whatever's causing that check engine light to come on, is covered under the partial zero emission vehicle warranty if it's presented to a manufacturer's dealership for that vehicle. This merely highlights what the warranty is. It doesn't really say what it covers. It references the California Code of Regulation section. I doubt many people are going to pull out their phone and reference what that covers. So in all effect, it would be a little bit simpler than this sheet of paper, to just, in effect, say, the independent auto repair shop tells them your vehicle's a PZEV vehicle, this applies to your vehicle, don't have to hand them papers, nothing to sign, just requiring them that the consumer is aware that if they meet those three points, they can take it to the dealership and get the repair done free of charge.
Okay, so are we, as a city, then, will we be giving the -- not providing all the paperwork for people, just one copy or one poster or one something?
I'm assuming that we can provide a PDF copy that people could print out and post on location. Not trying to create an entire new --
Paper mill.
Paper mill or requirements that the city provide these larger signs, but if you go --
Are you asking to be required to post on the wall?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Otherwise, I'm assuming that no one would likely post that. And I'm not requesting that we have any sort of remedy in this, in that if they fail to inform the consumer, the consumer can come to us and complain. We're not looking to go there. That would all be covered through current existing agencies that the Consumer Affairs and Bureau of Automobile Repair.
Yeah, we would not be the enforcer of anything.
Enforcer, we would just require the business to post it and have in the ordinance that they notify the consumer if it's applicable.
Okay. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That actually goes to the question that I had regarding penalties for not posting and penalties for not stating, you know, "You're under warranty, take your business somewhere else besides my shop." But you had said it would be covered under Consumer Affairs. Why is this entire topic not covered under Consumer Affairs?
That is a good question.
Thank you.
I wish there was a simple answer to it, but there is always an oversight, I think, in a lot of regulations that are put through. Small things slip through the cracks, like consumer notification. In my particular instance, actually, even the dealership believed initially that the repair was not covered under warranty, hence taking them to court to validate what the warranty does cover. In the state of California, if you asked most people, "Who covers the enforcement of warranty law?" You wouldn't assume that it's the California Department of Insurance. If you asked, "Who covers automobile repair shop complaints?" It's the Bureau of Automobile Repair, which is actually the licensing agency. But the Department of Consumer Affairs handles complaints for work performed on the cars. So it's a very complicated field. The state has not, as of yet, come up with a requirement for another posting within this, on this particular item. Even within the Air Resources Board, there was -- Even within the Air Resources Board, there was no consistent guideline document such as this. If you'll see, this was actually revised and put out October 20th of this year. I spent some time dealing with multiple representatives of CARB, Consumer Affairs, BAR, and the list goes on. Within what the Code of Regulations is, it references, it's a document that's been amended multiple times. It confuses many people within the industry. So what we're trying to accomplish is creating a, what I would feel is a clean example of consumer notification without referencing them to, excuse me, the Code of Regulations, without referencing them to complicated, convoluted, call the Department of Consumer Affairs. Well, when you call the Department of Consumer Affairs, they go, what are you talking about? We've never heard of this before. So we don't want to pass that responsibility off. Should the state have a requirement that the consumer is notified for an obscure warranty coverage that affects millions of vehicles in the state of California? Probably. And I think that's something that, at some point, if we set that good example at the local level, showing that we have that ability to step in in certain cases where the state has made an oversight, I think that will increase the likelihood that they do push that statewide.
Okay. Another question is you referenced your personal story with what happened to your car. Did you know that what was wrong with your car was covered under warranty yourself?
Yes, I did.
And you took it to the dealership? So your issue was with the dealership?
Right. So there are cases, I will admit, this is a clear example, that even when presented to the dealership, their lack of understanding on this issue, or at least certain dealerships, is problematic. Other dealerships that I've spoken to are very clear. They know what's covered, their warranty is in the handbook for that vehicle. Every manufacturer is a little bit different, because California's warranty laws are a bit different. Vermont, California, and there are a couple of other states that follow the same example.
Well, my thought is that every car I've ever purchased, including my most recent one, which was a 2013, I've read my warranty completely. I keep it with my car and a copy in the house. So I know what is under warranty, and if anything ever goes wrong with my car, that's the first thing I do, is get out my warranty and I check it to see what's covered and what's not covered. So I'm, and if, I'm just concerned that this is another thing that we're going to make businesses do, even if we're not going to have any teeth in enforcing it or any penalties for not complying, I'm not sure that it's incumbent on government, no matter which level of government, to make sure that people have read their warranty and that they know the best way to fix their car. I'm not sure that's really our job to do. So I'm a little bit hesitant on this one.
If I may just answer part of that. Many vehicle manufacturers' warranty guides actually do not reference this, because they're generically printed for the vehicle nationwide, and fail to reference the PZEV section for those particular vehicles. Because for California, a great example may be a Ford Focus vehicle. In California and several other states, it does qualify for the partial zero emission. It's zero emissions, zero evaporative emissions. In other states, in most states, it is not. So it's the same exact car. It's merely an engine code which separates it between qualifying for that warranty and not. And in most states, there's no reference to that PZEV section. So in California, a lot of times you can get your vehicle, that warranty guide that you read through in full doesn't have any reference or mention to this. The only way that you, as a consumer, would know is to either pull out your original vehicle window sticker, which will reference the engine PZEV code on that in very small print generally, or run your VIN number and check the engine code through that VIN number through, there are sites, you can do that, that it will tell you the code for the engine. Then you have to cross-reference that through the manufacturer's engine reference codes to see if your vehicle qualifies. For auto shops, it's a bit different. They are able to put the VIN number in, and they're going to see that engine code and know immediately that, first off, it was sold in California, so it already qualifies for this. So it's a lot easier to be notified that way than to do a significant amount of work and research that you wouldn't know what you'd be looking for unless you were already aware of this warranty to check to see if your vehicle was covered. So it's kind of the cart before the horse issue. You wouldn't know to look for that on your vehicle unless you were already aware of the warranty. So merely reading the vehicle's manufacturer's warranty guide doesn't necessarily inform you of everything that you should be informed of.
Well, I know Councilwoman Franklin has his light on, but again, when I bought my car, because California has some of the strictest automobile manufacturing guidelines in the country, everything that is particular to my car regarding emissions, and I don't have a zero or partial zero emission car, but everything particular to my car from California standards was listed quite clearly. So I'm just, I'm still not sure if this is something that government needs to get into, and if it is a problem that people aren't understanding that their standards for California aren't listed, what they have rights to, perhaps there's another body that this actually needs to go to rather than the local city council. But with that, I'll yield, thank you.
Councilwoman Franklin.
Thank you for answering my questions, Councilwoman.
I think we are treading into an area perhaps of state policy, and I realize that we can enact this ordinance, but I, and I appreciate what a frustrating experience that you had. Unfortunately, my philosophy mirrors what Councilwoman Rigby mentioned, which is, this is one more rock in the knapsack of businesses in our city. And, you know, there's so many things been legislated to be posted on the wall. You ever see those warnings that are everywhere now that say, you know, the wall will give you cancer, the door will give you cancer, the, you know, the floor will give you cancer? I mean, everything in the state of California, every building you enter, every car you ride in, every product, they all say they're going to cause cancer. It becomes, and I'm not saying that this is an unspecific warning, but I'm just saying the amount of things that we're requiring people to nail to their walls, they could paper their businesses, you know, they could wallpaper their businesses with. Now, I certainly have at least, I have at least eight square feet in my business dedicated to government-required literature, and it becomes such a deluge that I think it's excessive. I could certainly see including this type of notification when somebody purchases that kind of a vehicle. It's particularly relevant to them at that time, and then it's something you'd make them aware of at the time of purchase, and then they would carry that knowledge through the ownership, life of the ownership of that car. But I really, as much as there are some good reasons for doing the proposal on the grounds that it is one more regulation to apply to our businesses, and I really want to, I really want to only approve new regulations on business if there is a really compelling interest, and if I believe that that regulation will affect a change. And in this one, if, you know, they can nail it anywhere on the wall, they're going to pick, you know, they're going to pick a place that's maybe inconspicuous, but, or maybe conspicuous by some definition, but by others. So I just, I think we're asking people to do one more thing in a long list of things we ask people to do, and it's only for that reason that I don't feel that I can support it.
Councilmember Campbell.
Just a quick follow-up to that, and that's part of the key requirement that I was proposing, that the consumer is actually directed and notified that there is this posting. Otherwise, if you go into an auto repair shop, there are numerous postings, and some of them are superfluous and maybe unnecessary, don't apply to that particular situation. I agree, the Prop 65 warnings that appear essentially everywhere. But one of the key factors to this that also is covered is when you take your vehicle in for a smog check, if it fails a smog check, and it is covered by this warranty, which many vehicles are, those repairs, whatever is needed to cause that vehicle to pass smog is covered under the warranty. So we're potentially talking about saving people thousands of dollars, and when you add that up within the entire population of Vista who presents their cars for repair within a year, talking about saving consumers tens of thousands of dollars within our community and getting vehicles operating the way they're supposed to, not polluting within the city potentially long-term. So I understand the desire, and this is something that's why I've worked out, not asking for enforcement from the city or draconian requirements that we impose, you have to give a piece of paper, the consumer signs it and recognizes it, and that they've received notification. We're not looking at doing any of that, at least I'm not, but I am looking at creating a system in which we're notifying consumers, not of a fact that it's for minor repairs, you know, but it's something that enables consumers to be aware that their vehicle's covered for a longer period of time. You know, I agree, consumers should be notified upon purchase of the vehicle that it's covered, but eleven years later, ten years later, are you going to remember that, oh, my vehicle is still under warranty? You're going to assume that it's the thirty-six thousand, three-year warranty, which covers most of the vehicle. So I know this is a little bit outside of our normal wheelhouse, but as a city, I think it's our responsibility to do what's best for our constituents within the city of Vista. Sometimes, I know the council, we've taken a stance against what the state does. Sometimes, the state hasn't done something and they need to do something. But the state, as you know, does not act overnight. They do not act quickly. This is not something that they could put into effect next year. My dealings with the state on other regulations, it's a multi-year process. This is something that at the local level, we can enact and have in place sometime next year. So, and it does serve, I believe, as a catalyst, as a great example of government not imposing fees and more regulations that require enhanced penalties for failure to comply with a minor nuance in the ordinance or regulation, but leaves it up to those existing state agencies of the Bureau of Automobile Repair, Consumer Affairs, that if there is a problem, the business takes the sign down, the business doesn't notify the consumer, just so that they can charge them the money to have them pay out of pocket to get their repair done. Those are the appropriate state agencies that would investigate that business and review it, and that's what they currently do. And there are investigators for the Bureau of Automobile Repair that go out and make sure that they're following all state and local regulations. So that's what I'm proposing, is that we create a more blanket structure so that we just ensure that consumers that own those vehicles that are covered are able to get the work done as they're entitled by law at no charge.
Can I ask a follow-up question? And I'm going to ask this question of the city attorney. Is there a scenario where somebody goes into a shop, has work done, and they, maybe the notification didn't occur correctly, and then there's a civil action brought against the shop for failure to make this notification? They say, oh, you sold me, you know, thousands of dollars worth of repair, and you didn't tell me it was required by Civil Code in the city of Vista, therefore I have a cause for civil action against you. Could you foresee that?
That is a possibility. Most likely, someone would perhaps seek a remedy in small claims court, feeling that they had been deceived by the shop owner, who says, you need all of this work. Shop owner knows full well they don't, but-
Well, if the work's necessary, it's-
No, excuse me. They need the work, but they know full well that it could have been done for nothing.
Does the existence of this supposed ordinance, does that create the cause for action?
It could be structured to make it clear that it does. It could be left without any reference to those issues, and then it would be up to a court to determine whether or not they felt that failure to comply with the ordinance was a deceptive practice that warranted relief in the courts.
Thank you.
And I just can tell you that I had an experience that, and I don't know if it would have been covered under here or not, but one of my grandkids, when they had a, they bought a used car, and they had to take it in for smog, and so, and then the smog says, oh, you need, you know, it doesn't pass, you need some repairs, and then we just had the place that smogged and did the repairs. Who knows if that was, would ever have been covered? It's been a while since that happened, but who knows if it would have been covered in the past, so. And I generally don't like to put more work on businesses or more paperwork on businesses either. I don't like to do that, but I'm thinking this might be a way, just, as long as it's just a poster on the wall, and if they hand them a piece of paper, say, you know, if they, when they pull the VIN number, I guess you say they're notified. When they pull the VIN number, they'll know that. So I don't know, I think it might be okay to do that. So anyway, Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess I'm, to follow up on John's question, Councilwoman Franklin's question, wouldn't by posting this on the wall, wouldn't that in some way actually protect the business owner? Because they have officially notified anybody that's come through the door?
It could be offered as evidence for that purpose. The shop owner could say, we've posted a notice to this effect. I believe that Councilman Campbell was, however, also requesting that they be required under the ordinance to point out the existence of the notice. So if that's the case, then simply having it there probably would have no effect on a claim that they were being deceptive. Earlier, I mentioned you could do the ordinance in two ways, one of which would simply be say you have the obligation to post and notify. The other would be to say you have the obligation to post and notify, and that the failure to do so is a deceptive practice. And that would certainly give someone a leg up going into small claims court if they were in fact deceived by the shop owner.
Hello, everyone. So what is your pleasure today? Everybody wants to say anything? Councilmember Campbell.
I might follow up. This is primarily, it's obviously a discussion item. What I would perhaps suggest for additional clarification on this item and providing some more structure is provide direction to the city attorney's office to craft a package, because this is a multifaceted item in some way, and that we don't, it sounds like there's some concern that people will sue businesses claiming they were never notified in small claims court, which I can tell you that emissions-related warranty claims going to small claims court is a very complex procedure for the small claims. They get, they said mine was one of the most complicated and convoluted they'd ever seen in the years that they had worked there. But that said, what I think that the city attorney's office could do is craft what the posting would say, what it would be, in the effect that, in simple layman's terms, allowing the consumer to know what the PZEV warranty covers, and craft the ordinance in a simple way that says, if the vehicle is presented for repair and that vehicle is a PZEV warranty, that the consumer would be notified that the PZEV warranty requirements and this particular posting or piece of paper are applicable. It doesn't create a burden to the business to say, here's a list of where you could take your vehicle to be repaired free of charge. We're not trying to lay the foundation to hand-hold the consumer all the way through the process, but during my interactions and dealings with the state agencies, even the agency that posted or produced this flyer, the Air Resources Board, getting ahold of even the person there that is knowledgeable of emissions warranty laws in the state is almost impossible. It's a multi-week process. For most people, that their vehicle needs repair, they're not going to wait three months to go through a process of contacting, conducting research, examining the Code of Regulations, and ultimately getting their vehicle repaired through a lengthy process. Most people need that to work more quickly, and this is of most impact and import to those residents of the city that can least afford to have out-of-pocket expenses for vehicle repairs, that those are the individuals that are most in need of their vehicle to be functioning and working properly. So I think it's of even more interest to create that notification and information for Vista residents. While it may not be ultimately, should it be, our position or fall upon us to do this, ultimately, we are where we are, and the state does not have these informational requirements within the auto repair shops. within the auto repair shops. And we have an opportunity, I feel, to make a positive impact within the community without creating an onerous burden on those facilities. So, what I'd like to do, obviously, we're not voting on approval or adoption of an ordinance tonight, but what I'd like to see have come back is the city attorney craft that language that, in effect, meets those requirements. Obviously, we can continue the discussion at that time, but I think having something more tangible in front of us, that the attorney, our attorney has crafted a visual of what the posting requirement would be, I think would perhaps be beneficial. So, I'd like to make that motion, that we direct the city attorney to accomplish those items.
Okay. You have a second? Anybody? Nobody's going to second it?
I'll second it.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. So, it's going to send it back to the attorney to come back with some language, right?
That's correct.
And then we'll talk about an ordinance again, right?
Yes.
Okay. Pass your votes in, please. Okay, that motion passed three to two.
Thank you.
Okay. Next thing on our agenda, is our Paseo Santa Fe Roundabout Sculpture Approval, and our Recreation and Community Services Director, Bill Fortmiller, before he retires, is going to introduce this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor's Member of the Council. To my right is Rachel Beld, our Department Management Analyst, and she'll be assisting me with the report today. As part of Phase One of the Paseo Santa Fe Streetscape Project, a public art sculpture was included in the design of the roundabout at South Santa Fe and Eucalyptus. In July of this year, a call to artists was issued for the project. Nine submittals from six artists were received. On October 6th, the Public Art Commission reviewed the submittals and selected Prima Vista by Vista native Michelangelo Ventarello as the winning design. The commission appreciated the fact that the material of this sculpture was different than others downtown. They also felt it was a large statement piece that would become a focal centerpiece of the city. In the artist's words, "Prima Vista is elegant and uplifting. The sculpture complements Vista's growth and redevelopment while enhancing the local streetscape. The spiraling wood design provides a dynamic piece that morphs as users navigate the roundabout, generating the perfect location to showcase the sculpture's movement and radial design." The sculpture has two parts that come together to share a single piece of wood, creating a brief touch or embrace. The chosen material is two-inch-by-six-inch-by-eight-foot planks of Brazilian ironwood, or epi wood. The wood has the same fire rating as concrete and steel. It is so dense that it does not float on water. It has a natural oil that keeps bugs out and is resistant to mildew and decay, and it has a life expectancy of 30 to 50 years. Some of the original Coney Island boardwalk and Atlantic City boardwalk are made of this wood, and they're still in existence today. Halfway up, the two piece, two concrete footings will support two 12-foot steel rods that serve backbones of the sculpture. Halfway up, the two pieces interlock for structural stability. The width of Prima Vista is 22 feet wide. The inner circle of the roundabout is 27 feet wide. Additional footing secure the spiraling structure to the ground. Each plank will be attached to the adjoining plank for additional stability. That concludes my report. Mr. Ventarello is here tonight, if you have any questions for him, and I'm also available for any questions.
Okay, so Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
My deputy mayor, or council?
Thank you. When do we change? We just changed? Oh, so it's no longer that?
Councilman.
Okay, Councilmember Aguilera.
I got demoted.
I learned how to say this.
I demoted myself, because I seconded it. My question to the city manager was really about graffiti, how it would withstand that, or, you know, as far as cleaning it and all that, so...
Well, there's just a natural finish on the wood, I believe, so it could be sanded, sanded off in that regard. If it's carved, it could be sanded off, just like the metal sculptures downtown. We, you know, we're able to clean them off. If they're etched, we're able to, you know, sand them down.
How about spray paint, or whatever?
Spray paint, there are chemicals that will remove the graffiti. It's so dense that nothing's going to penetrate the wood, so it would come off.
Yeah, I'm just worried about damaging in that, so, okay.
It's pretty much an impervious material.
Well, that's what you said, so, sounds good, okay.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera, Rigby, just how badly it comes off.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Did you say that the pieces move?
No, it's stationary, but it, as you're driving around, it appears to be, appears to be moving. But they're stationary, they're locked, the centerpiece that ties them together locks them.
That's what I had thought, but when looking at it and reading the report, but you had said something that made me think that it moved. So, I'm looking at this picture here in the top half, and I'm looking at the size of it and compared with the roundabout itself, and then the cars behind it. And I have a concern about being able to see. I know that I like to see things coming at me and the cars coming into the roundabout, and I see that this might be a little bit of an obstruction to view. So, that's one concern that I have. The second thing that I was thinking about is, this is the first roundabout of three that are scheduled. I wonder if we are not jumping the gun a little bit in incorporating a permanent piece of artwork onto this roundabout without taking into consideration the design ideas and the artwork for the three roundabouts, if we want to keep them with some cohesiveness and some continuity. So, I'm not sure this is the right time to be looking at artwork for the roundabout.
Councilmember Campbell?
I have no concerns about the size of the artwork in the roundabout on this particular piece. I think sometimes looking at conceptual art on a page of, piece of paper here, is a little bit different than actually seeing it out and about in public. But I'm wondering, you know, just my personal preference, if there's an artwork ability to make one central piece, the design of these two pieces leaning against each other, I'm not sure it's going to fit with future artwork as well at the next couple of roundabouts that we do. This is very distinctive, and I'm a little concerned that if we put something like this in, the style of artwork for the next two roundabouts is somewhat dictated by this. So...
Two responses. One, I think, the one thing, the Public Art Commission, they didn't want to typecast, like, the same three pieces of art. They want varying art downtown and throughout the project. In answer to your question about visual, we did have the traffic engineer look at these, at all the submittals. The only issue he really expressed was any piece of sculpture that had movement, that it would be a distraction, and so, he didn't view this one as an issue in terms of visibility at the time. In terms of, I'd have to leave that to the artists, as far as any changes that might, as far as structurally to that, I really couldn't speak to that.
So, I want to make my personal opinion clear, in deference, in all deference to the Art Commission, is that I don't want three very unique, different pieces of art with extremely different styles going forward on this over the next few years. I think one of the things that we're doing with Paseo Santa Fe is linking everything together with more of a consistent style, and having, at least, I mean, we would have, say, in the future, but having extreme varying degrees of the types of art that we have, I think would create a visual disconnect.
Well, that could be addressed in the call to art for those future pieces as well, that it would need to tie in aesthetically to what's existing.
Right. I just wanted to make that clear going forward.
Councilmember Franklin?
I thought it was interesting, it was pointed out to me, that the sculpture was sort of an afterthought, and we only appropriated $10,000 for the RFP. And so, I would make the comment in the interim, it's an interesting piece. I thought it was the best of the ones submitted. The investment is quite small. You know, we think we just approved $170,000 for a fence. It was one part of the addition to the skate park, was one of my favorite things that we did. I'm just saying comparatively, it's a very small amount of money. The sculpture, if we did decide to remove it to a different location, and I assume we could, you know, it could be moved to Bringle Terrace or one of the parks. If we decided three years from now that we wanted to change it, we have a very small investment. And so, I'm not suggesting that it'd be a temporary piece, but if we decided, even in the short term, that we wanted to change our minds and do something else, but this might be a nice placeholder. I just thought I would point that out, the investment is quite small. I actually thought, and was surprised that we didn't choose, with the immense amount of money that we've invested in this project, I was kind of surprised we didn't, and with what a focal piece this is, I was kind of surprised that we only allotted $10,000 to this. I had my own ideas about, like, you know, a John Frazier statue, statue or something historical, or, but anyway, I just wanted to point that out. So, I would support moving forward with this right now.
Councilmember Aguilera?
You did say John Frazier, not John Franklin?
[laughter]
Okay, I can support that.
But, Councilman, that's a great idea.
I'm sure you think so. I actually like the sculptures, it's growing on me. But I did want to point one thing out about the two pieces, you know, on the page six of six here, exhibit three, it says, "The sculpture has two parts that, in their movement, come together to share a single piece of wood, creating a brief touch or embrace." And I think one of the things that we were talking about earlier is that we're trying to create that connectivity, and I think if you really think about it, this is a piece that helps demonstrate that, and that's what I see in it, so. I think this is good, and I think you made some good points, Mr. Franklin. You know, I think it's going to be there forever, but if, for some reason, a future council doesn't think so, no big deal.
And the image you see, that would be the view driving down north or south on Santa Fe, and then this, the open view of the two pieces, what you see from Eucalyptus are coming out of the sale point facility.
Yeah, so I think visually, it doesn't take away too much either, then, if that's the view you see as you come up and down, and so, the wider areas as you pass through.
We could change that any time. We could reorient and depart the art to a greater...
You want to come up?
We could up here and speak on the...
That's important to me as well, that we have maximum possible visibility with the orientation of the sculpture. I just wanted to mention that.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the council. My name is Michelangelo Ventarello. I'm the designer of Prima Vista. As far regarding your question and comment about the picture, it is an artist's rendering. I took the image, the background image online, so I'm sure the scale would be a little bit less big. It wouldn't be so grandiose and make that car look so bad, or so small in the background, to answer that question. And as far as orientation goes, we could simply spin it. Until we sign the contract and the contractor puts the footings in, we can rotate it, we can still work on lighting, different color lighting to go on at night. The lighting can change colors, it can stay stagnant. We can do a Christmas theme, throw Christmas lights on it during Christmas. I mean, there's a lot of artistic ways we could spin this and really make it work, but this is a good base to work off so far. Any other questions?
How tall is it?
The original was nine foot tall. Now that I've gone and I've actually found a supplier of the wood, it's actually down to nine feet.
Nine?
Nine feet, 22 feet wide, nine feet tall, but it's on a, I don't know exactly how high the planter is, three feet?
About three feet.
So, it's still 12 feet tall in total. But the sculpture itself is nine feet tall.
Very nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Rigby?
I just wanted to reiterate where you say that it's stationary, but as you move around it, it appears to move. And it's in the middle of the street, we're driving. I don't want to be, have drivers distracted by something in the middle of the street that appears to be moving, as well as cars coming into and out of the roundabout. So, I'm concerned about that. That's not, that should not be what our goal is. And as much as I do appreciate having art in the roundabouts, and I do think that that's something that would be good and beneficial and add to the character and charm, and this is a lovely piece, I just don't think this is the right place for this piece. And I think that whatever artwork we do, we need to keep it in scale and in mind that it's in the middle of the street and we're driving, and we don't need to be that distracted by things that appear to be moving, or with a lot of lights and changing lights and things like that. So, and again, I actually like the idea of Councilman Franklin, perhaps even one of the center, the center roundabout, to do an historical figure, you know, from Vista. I don't know how we decide on which one, though, that's another conversation. But I still think that maybe the three roundabouts need to be considered together before we decide on any one piece for any one of them. And different, same, contrasting but complementing, I'm not sure how that goes. I just, I still think very strongly that this is not the right time to be deciding this, and I don't think this is the right piece. So, thank you very much.
Councilmember Franklin?
And I kind of made my comment, but just to clarify, when you're driving down Santa Fe, that's where I would want to make sure you had the maximum possible visibility ahead on the street. If we could do that, I'd be...
Councilmember Campbell?
So, Councilmember Franklin had a good point. This is not going to be fixed here permanently, forever, potentially. We do have options in the future. I don't want to, you know, one thing I don't want to do is wait years and years before we put a piece in the first roundabout, so that before they're all three finished. This piece, I think, I do, I mean, personally, I want something larger, I'm not saying larger than this, I'm just saying I do want something relatively large in the roundabout. Visibility in that particular roundabout, I don't think is going to be a problem if it's oriented parallel to the traffic pattern. I don't see this causing visibility, and I don't see the illusion of movement. I've seen similar pieces of art to this in public, and it is an interesting effect, but I don't think that's going to be a great distraction to drivers on that street, especially since it's in a roundabout where traffic speed is not going to be very high, at least we hope they're not driving very fast. So, with that, I'm going to make a motion that we approve this item and adopt the resolution.
Councilmember Aguilera?
I'll second it.
Was that all you wanted to say?
Yep.
Oh, okay. Is this the speaker? No. Okay. Please cast your votes. Okay, that motion passes four to one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so next on our agenda, we are at D7, Proposed General Plan Amendment and Zone Change at 1100 East Vista Way. And our Community Development Director, John Conley, will present the staff report. Hi, John.
Hi, Mayor, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed general plan amendment, zone change at 1100 East Vista Way. This is the site of the former security Chevrolet up on East Vista Way, located in between the Dollar Tree and Northgate Market. The application is a general plan amendment from Commercial Neighborhood, which is primarily a retail designation, to Commercial General, which allows some heavier commercial and storage uses, and a zone change from C1 to C2. Those are the legislative actions that the council has full discretion in, so that's what we're asking for your input in tonight. If it's supported, then the applicant has to come back through with a special use permit and a site development plan, which will go through our normal review process and go to the Planning Commission for approval, or is appealable to the city council. I mentioned the project location, it's shown here on the overhead, surrounded by commercial uses to the north and south, within the overall strip center along East Vista Way. To the west is multifamily housing, and to the east is a vacant site that's proposed for multifamily housing in the future. Some photos of the site that are taken from the street views, the west, south, and north views are all from the fronting access road that accesses the site, as well as the adjacent commercial shopping center, and the east view is from Cayenne Jewels, which backs up to the back part of the property, and includes a drainage easement, or a city property that includes a drainage area that's between the existing auto repair garages and the street. The general plan and zoning is shown here. Commercial Neighborhood is the current general plan. Commercial General would be the proposal. C1 is the existing zoning, and C2 is what's proposed. Included in your packet is the site development plan from the applicant for the proposed project, which has been submitted to the planning department. Includes nine separate buildings, of which three would be two-story buildings, the rest would be one-story storage structures. The intent is to build the larger-scale buildings up along the street and the access road in the front of the property, as well as the retail and office space, and have the storage buildings in the back, which would be fairly obscured by the buildings in the front. in the front. Architectural view here, just to give you some context for what's proposed, it's a fairly contemporary architectural design. Of course, as I said, this still has to go through our application process, so just to give you some idea of what's proposed this evening. And so the staff is requesting the council's input and direction on the proposed legislative actions, which are the general plan and zone change. And following that direction, staff will meet with the applicant and process their special use permit and site development plan request. And that completes my presentation, thank you.
Okay, I have two speakers. First speaker is Paul Driscoll.
Excuse me, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Paul Driscoll, and I'm one of the founding members of August Ventures, the company looking to develop this self-storage facility here. I just wanted to take the opportunity tonight to thank you for considering our proposal, and then express our enthusiasm for developing this project. While our company is new, we have over 50 years' experience in the self-storage industry. Lance Alworth, the founder, began developing self-storage projects in the late 70s, is actually one of the pioneers in the industry, and has developed 49 facilities across the United States, most of those here in California. In 2013, we had the opportunity to merge with Extraspace Self-Storage, which is the second-largest self-storage company in the U.S., and in our opinion and in industry opinion, the premier operator of self-storage companies, of facilities. Year-over-year, they're voted by industry experts as the best management company of self-storage facilities. They do a great job of maintaining their properties, keeping them secure, clean, and operated by professional managers. When we merged with them, we got the opportunity to be their developer for the West Coast. They don't do any development on their own, they use companies like us, local companies, to develop for them. So Lance and I are thrilled at the opportunity to partner with them and to develop projects like this one here in Vista. What we look for are vacant properties in established neighborhoods that are ripe for improvement, and we feel this fits that bill for us and for the community. We, this would be our first project, working with Extraspace, so we're looking to make this our flagship property that we can use to show Extraspace and other communities what we can do to improve the look and feel of the community, and to add a service that the community can use. So again, just wanted to express our enthusiasm for the project, and thank you for considering it.
Councilmember Campbell, did you have a question of him?
Not of him.
Okay, Lance Alworth, then, thank you.
Mayor and City Council, thank you for entertaining what we'd like to consider our first mini warehouse. I built, or the company, my family, and I have built, as Paul said, 49 properties, I believe, across the state, but we've never built one like we're going to build here. And the reason I can say that is that we're building a different little animal. It's going to be a mini storage property, but it's not going to look like one. And this has been accomplished across the United States, it's been done before. We want to start a company that takes properties that have been run down, not necessarily run down, but have not fulfilled their use any longer, and see if we can make them become a new child in the city and fit in and grow with the city. This is our first, and I want to thank you guys for entertaining just the idea of letting us do it, and we look forward to building a great project here, and I promise you, we will do a good one. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Alworth, for those comments, and I think this is, has an opportunity to be a great project for the site, that's currently, I think, underutilized. It's a difficult location for more traditional retail business, access to the site, street visibility is limited, so I think this sort of use is fitting for this particular site, it's a low-traffic site. So, not normally the biggest fan of self-storage within the city, as staff will tell you, I've been opposed to other numerous self-storage projects, but those projects were not located at a project site that worked for that use. This one, I think it fits, it'll definitely be an improvement to that particular site. First off, I think anything is better than an empty building that's been sitting there for years and has no potential future as that. So with that, I would like to just make the motion to amend the general plan and change the zoning designation, obviously with the understanding that this project is going to come back and require additional approvals.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
I will second that motion.
Okay. So you know their speakers, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on to our last discussion item, number D8, it's the fiscal year 2015-16 First Quarter Financial Report, and our Finance Director, Treasurer Lauren Worm, will present the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. The fiscal year 1516 First Quarter Report serves as a summary in comparison to the prior year-end actual results, as well as the current year budget-to-actual results for the general fund and the enterprise funds. The report also includes proposed budget amendments for the first quarter. Total general fund revenues were 9.1 million for the first three months in fiscal year 1516, compared to 8.5 million for the same period in the prior fiscal year, which represents an increase of 6.6%. The city's general fund revenue is 14% of the budgeted amount of the current year compared to 12% in the prior year. This is in accordance with budgetary expectations for the first period, for the first quarter period. Sales tax is on a two-month timing lag, and property taxes are received later in the fiscal year. Significant amounts of payments, including sales tax, are received in July and August, however related, and are accrued back to the prior year. Other payments received throughout the year are recorded on a cash basis accounting methodology when considered available, and are recorded to the month received. As the economy continues to improve, the city should expect a slight increase in assessed property values and actual property tax revenues as compared to the prior year, and a slight increase in sales tax receipts, including prop el sales tax, as compared to the prior year. Total general fund expenditures are about 15% of budget. Similar to revenues, invoices for payment related to the prior year are accrued back to the prior year, and the payments are recorded when paid at other times during the year, which can result in a lag of the percentage of budget expended, noted especially early in the fiscal year. Total general fund expenditures were 11.4 million for the first three months of the fiscal year, compared to 10.7 million for the same period in the prior fiscal year, which represents an increase of also 6.6%. Exhibit 1 includes financial and economic highlights for the first three months of the operations for fiscal year 1516. The noteworthy items include, according to the County of San Diego, the estimated assessed valuation for fiscal year 1516 is projected at an increase of 5%, a continued and steady decline in unemployment due to the growth in the economy, with Vista reporting 4.1% unemployment, and the county reporting 4.6% unemployment. Single-family detached home prices in North San Diego County increased 6.5%, with single-family attached home prices reporting a 2% increase. The two-year Treasury note investment yield still trending at a very slight increase over the past year, but still remains at near historical lows, while inflationary pressure has remained in check. Discussion on recommended budget amendments is included in Exhibit 2, which is on pages eight and nine of the Agenda Report. So the recommendation is to receive and file the fiscal year 201516 First Quarter Financial Report, as well as adopt the resolutions amending the operating and the capital budget and the citywide classification and compensation index. Thank you.
Okay, do I have any questions on the budget? Anyone? No? Well, okay. Councilmember Aguilera.
So you have North San Diego County homes here, but do we have anything for Vista specifically for the rise in prices?
So the material that we're able to get is for North San Diego County, maybe we can look into getting just Vista.
Or just go by property tax?
I'm not sure that it's available.
Can we just go by property tax, or is it something different?
So we, I mean, we get the, from the county, the assessed property values.
Right.
So we can use that.
That'd just be interesting to have.
Yeah, but it's different than the sales data, so. We get the North County market, but we haven't been able to get a Vista-specific for sales data. I might ask the mayor if that could be available.
Through the MLS, you can get that information, the multiple listing service, they have that now.
Maybe our mayor will get that for us.
I might be able to get that for you.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion on this? Okay. Well, I'll move for approval. Councilmember Campbell.
I'll second.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Rigby, do you have a question?
Just a second.
Okay. Cast your votes, please. Motion passes unanimously. Yay, we're through all of our discussion items, now the next is our public hearings. So our public hearing number one, and at the request of the applicant, that was removed, so we move right on to public hearing number two. Presidio Vista Annexation, Reorganization, Tentative Subdivision Map, and Pre-Zoning, and Community Development Director John Conley is going to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Patsy Chow, our city planner, is the planner assigned to this project, and she'll be making the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Reader, Councilmembers, Patsy Chow, city planner. The item before you this evening is a request for an annexation, pre-zoning, tentative subdivision map. All right, here we go. Request for annexation, pre-zoning, and tentative subdivision map on a 11.4-acre site that would allow for a creation of 31 single-family residential lots. The lots would range in size from approximately 10,000 square feet to 15,000 square feet at a density of 2.7 dwelling units per acre. The project also includes associated drainage improvements, wet/dry utilities. There are two private streets being created as part of the project, A and B, and I should point out at this point, there are no homes that are being proposed at this time, and any future homes, obviously, to be developed on the site would be reviewed by staff at that point, and they would have to comply with the R1 zone requirements. This aerial photo shows the existing uses surrounding the project site, residential uses mainly, and then to the south of Ridge Road, existing plant nurseries. The pre-zoning, as mentioned earlier, would be an R1 zone, which would be consistent with the land use designation in the general plan, that's currently found as medium-low density at five dwelling units per acre. As far as the land use designation as being medium-low density, five dwelling units per acre, existing properties to the east, west, and south of Ridge Road also have the same land use designation, and north of the project site, there is, there are properties designated as low-density at two dwelling units per acre. Key issues for consideration on this project are comprised of general plan consistency, as previously mentioned, the lots ranging from 10,000 to 15,000, that being consistent with the general plan designation of medium-low density. As far as drainage and sewer issues are concerned, the project would connect to existing sewer system that is found north of the project site through Melrose Way, through an existing eight-inch sewer main, and it would also connect via proposed storm drain system to an existing culvert that is located southeasterly of the project site on Ridge Road. The project would improve the existing onsite drainage conditions, and also help consolidate all the different discharge locations currently found on the site that move in a northerly and a southerly direction, and therefore would help actually control any cross-lot drainage issues. The applicant held a meeting at the beginning of this year, in 2015, with the neighbors in order to let them know about the proposed annexation. Some photos depicting the site, the first photos to the left, just looking northwest at the proposed project site, and then looking north. The middle picture, looking south directly across the street, across Ridge Road, and then to the right side of the screen, some photos of Ridge Road, looking west and east with the project site identified with the yellow arrow on the top photo. This is a tentative map depiction identifying the 31 single-family lots that would be created with the project, private streets A and B. The bioretention basin, Lot A, at the southeasterly portion of the site. An existing 20-foot sewer easement that would allow for connection into existing eight-inch sewer main that's coming off of Melrose Way to the north of the project site. So there's a 10-foot sewer easement that is just off of the project site that would allow for further improvements to connect to the existing sewer main. As far as landscaping is concerned, the project meets the landscape ordinance, street trees and slope erosion control be provided as depicted on this drawing. There would be use of mostly native materials, as well as some non-native plant materials. There would be a five-foot-high vinyl perimeter fence around the project site, as well as is a three-foot-high rail fence proposed along Ridge Road. A mitigated neck deck was prepared for the project, and it was available for a public review between August 27, September 25. The city received a total of six comment letters, and responses were provided to them. As far as the proposed density, 2.7 dwelling units per acre, it is below the maximum allowed five dwelling units per acre that is permitted by the general plan, and it actually is consistent and adds on to the character of the area surrounding the project site. The project, and as mentioned before, the future homes will have to meet the standards as identified in the R1 zone. On November 3, the Planning Commission approved the proposed project with a vote of 6 to 1, with a condition added that the landscaping concept plan would be amended to reflect decomposed granite as the treatment for the six-foot-wide proposed parkway along Ridge Road. Yesterday, we've received a letter from a concerned resident, Ms. McKinnon, that was dated December 4. She raised some concerns about biological resources on site. Staff then proceeded to draft a condition of approval, that, Condition F1M, which is being proposed in order to address Ms. McKinnon's concerns. Both the letter and the new condition of approval were added to packet, and you should have a copy of that for your information. With that, staff's recommendation is for council's adoption of the resolutions concerning the mitigated neck deck and the mitigation monitoring reporting program, as well as a resolution that would allow application to the local agency formation commission for the proposed annexation, and finally, a resolution that would approve the tentative subdivision map and the pre-zoning to R1 for the proposed 31-lot, single-family subdivision. This concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay, I have speakers, and so I'll take those first, if that's okay with everyone. The first speaker is Blair Pruitt, he's the applicant.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, staff. Thank you for the opportunity to be before you this evening. I do not have a formal presentation for you this evening, relying on staff for that. I do have our consulting team here, consisting of Rod Bradley and Dale Clark from BHA, our civil engineer of record, Tori Walker from Tori Walker Engineering, and Chris Mendier of LLGR Traffic Engineer of Record. We're all available to address any questions that arise this evening for you. Thank you.
Councilmember Aguilera, do you have questions of Blair?
Yeah, I do, Madam Mayor. One of the things that, in our discussion, we talked about was the trail, the walking trail, and we had maybe agreed that we would go ahead and extend it to Melrose, but without taking any kind of right-of-way, you know, not the full width, basically, just working with what was available. Is that part of the deal here?
Well, yeah, we examined that quite a bit, went out, you know, did field walks, we also looked at the right-of-way that... We also looked at the right-of-way that existed there. There are a couple of pinch points that make it difficult to walk from our southeastern corner to Melrose. It can be done, though. I walked it when I was taking the pictures, but to send, you know, my children from my home there by themselves, you know, I'd want an adult accompanying them, just to get through the pinch point, one of which being the, the box culvert that's there. The road width there shrinks down to about 80 feet. As you approach Melrose, it widens to as much as 60, even more. As far as looking at the properties that are there, there is a portion of the property that is within the county, so that's an additional municipality that we'll need to comment. In addition to that, if we were to propose making improvements, we don't, you know, own any of those properties, we don't control any of them. In fact, one of the property owners, our neighbors, that attended the Planning Commission hearing, stood up and, at that time, opposed anything going on in front of his property. So, our spirit is, you know, we're happy to cooperate as that area develops to the east, and if the connectivity element is there, you know, that's typically how those improvements are made, when they develop. We have the flexibility on our frontage, we're happy to accommodate that. You know, pretty much all I have.
Will that be something that we could address when the homes get built?
So, the short answer is, there is room in the right-of-way for a good portion of the trail, but there are some locations where we couldn't actually fit a trail within the existing right-of-way, and it would require some off-site grading.
Okay.
So, we have not included a condition unless the council wants to direct us to do so.
I'm not ready to do that. Thank you.
That was one of my concerns also, was the sidewalk, you know, because we're trying to make this more a walkable community, and I think there's parks close by, and so I'm, I can see with the additional traffic on that road, I think it'll be hard for kids to, you know, people to walk down there. What about the other side of the street? Could you do, if they cross the street at your property, is it, is it more of a clear shot on the other side of the street?
You know, unfortunately, on the other side of the street, it's, you know, it's county property, I believe. The other thing is, it falls off in certain sections as well, so grading and import would need to occur in order to raise up certain sections to create the actual walkable area off the pavement. So, it would, it would just require us, again, to, you know, develop on property that we don't own or control. We'd need permission from, from private individuals.
Because I know that, like, on that side of the street also, there's, isn't there a commercial, something commercial over there? And so, I think, well, people walk on that street, because with the commercial traffic, and then your, you know, 31 homes or whatever, then, you know, a lot of more people, kids might be walking, and so I'm just thinking, it might be, I just, I like to see sidewalks or, or some kind of trails, so. Okay, okay, so I guess I'll call Councilmember Campbell.
I was gonna wait for the speakers to finish.
Oh, you're waiting for the speakers to finish? Okay.
Thank you.
You're off the hook for the moment. Okay, Jeff Stemp, Simpler, got it.
Good evening. I live at 1315 Ridge Road. I'm in the southeast corner of this project. And when we went to the Planning Commission, I had a lot of comments about the drainage. I did meet with, with Blair. He walked me through a lot of the development or the improvements that they're gonna do to the existing drainage, which is terrible. And also, they were willing to make some compromises and make some changes in landscaping. My house is gonna be at the very bottom of this large slope that, the house directly above me is about 40 feet above me, or will be about 40 feet above me. So, they've decided to make some improvements to the landscaping. They talked to me about the drainage, about this catch basin that they're gonna put in, and how it's going to hopefully improve the drainage. Anything that you do, it'll be an improvement. So, I'm actually, you know, I approve it, I, I'm looking forward to it. The idea of sidewalks, when they first brought it up, I was kind of against that, but as I look at it now, it would be nice, but I don't think it's gonna be doable. It would require moving power poles, gas mains, water mains, and it would be, and you'd have to improve that box culvert that they're gonna drain into. It's barely wide enough for two cars. There's nowhere anybody could walk unless they put a bridge over the existing drainage canal that's there. So, it would be some extensive construction to make any kind of a path along that, that area. On the other side of the street, there's areas where it drops off from the street, it drops off over four feet.
Oh, yeah.
So, they'd have to fill in people's whole front yard to put even a sidewalk in there, so. But I do approve it. I was very pleased that they came out and actually talked to me. I met with the engineer, I met with Blair. They were very interested in making sure that they addressed any concerns that I had. So, I'm pretty happy with it. I hope that it goes through. And like I said, my, my property's probably the one that's going to be impacted by the most, as far as any of the existing homes that are there. And though I'm not thrilled with the way it's gonna look, I understand what they have to do, and they seem to be more than willing to try to do everything they can to improve what they can in, in front of my property. They're also talked about helping some redo my driveway when they redo Ridge Road. Traffic is still kind of an issue. They don't, you know, apparently, the city hasn't requested any other traffic changes, but at some point, once these 31 homes come in, I think traffic's gonna be an issue there. I think it's gonna have to be something that's addressed sometime in the future, but the widening of that street would be wonderful, but I don't think it's gonna be part of this project, you know?
Okay.
I agree with you. I think sidewalks would be great along, you know, someplace, there's a lot of kids that walk along that street now, and they just have to dodge the semis that are pulling into the.
Yeah.
Now, I mean, there's 18-wheelers coming down that street every day, so.
And with the additional traffic of all the homes, it'll be, it'll be more.
The 18-wheelers are a bigger problem, because they don't pay attention to the speed limit. Right now, that speed limit on that street is 55 miles an hour.
Yeah.
There's no sidewalks, there's no shoulders, there's nothing. So, anything that they do, there will be a big improvement, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speaker is Dale Clark.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Dale Clark with BHA. We are here representing the applicant, Blair Pruitt, for the project. If he has to have any questions, I'll answer them as best as I can. That's about it.
You gotta wait, okay. One more speaker is Chip Hasley.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, members of the council. My name is Chip Hasley with Park Grove Properties in San Diego. I'm here tonight representing Parkway Palms Nursery. They're the current owner of the property. We've been working with the applicant for a couple of years on this project. We support the project. It's consistent with the general plan and the zoning for the area. We also think it's gonna bring some needed housing to the South Vista area, so we would hope that you would follow the staff's recommendation and the Planning Commission's recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all of our speakers, so, Councilmember Campbell.
So, just to disclose, I did meet with the project applicant on this project, but I have no other communication with any other members of the public on this. So, I am supportive of the recommendation from staff and the Planning Commission. As much as I would like to see a walking path connect to Melrose from the project site, I think it's a little premature to put that as a requirement. I think it does need some additional research by the project applicant when they do come forward with proposal for building on the site. And I do think there is some opportunity to maybe work with the other jurisdiction, which is the county in this case, to potentially fill in the missing links to make that work. But it is important to keep in mind that this is the county, as well as the city in the annexation, so it's a little bit more complicated than just having the right-of-way and connecting it through, filling it in. With that, I would like to make the motion to close the public hearing and adopt staff recommendations.
I'll second it.
Okay, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. Okay, the next on our agenda is, let's see, where are we? Public hearing number?
Three.
Yeah, public hearing number three. Recreation and Community Services Program and Facility Rental Fees. And that will be, hold on here, find my right thing. Recreation and Community Services Director Bill Fortmiller will introduce this item.
Good evening again. Tonight, we'll be bringing forward our annual fees for the next, the next calendar year, starting in January. Rachel Bild, our managing analyst, will be doing the report. We also have our division managers here, if you have any particular questions about their specific programs. And I would like to remind the council, we will not be reviewing ticket fees from the Moonlight Amphitheater. That was done earlier, I believe it was in October, so it's rental fees regarding cultural arts in, in this, this go-around.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. As Bill mentioned, tonight I'll be discussing the proposed changes to Recreation and Community Services fees for services, as well as the policies and procedures effective January 1st, 2016. The Recreation and Community Services Department has experienced some economic changes in the past few years, which we expect to continue through next fiscal year. These include increases from Vista irrigation, other utilities, SDG&E, as well as the proposed, as the planned increased minimum wage effective in January. In addition, vendor, vendor and contracts are include, increasing, and we've seen annual inflationary increases. Here's a quick summary of the council-proved subsidies and self-sufficiency rates. $200,000 for cultural arts, senior, senior nutrition, wave, and recreation. And then, here is a, a quick summary of the most recent subsidies for the cultural arts program. Most recent fiscal year of 2014, 15, the actual subsidy was $200,000 after the foundation contribution. And then, for the Wave Waterpark, the council-proved subsidy at $315,000, and then in 1415, the actual was $325,000. Speaking of the wave, so this, this evening before you, we are proposing to offset increased costs that were previously discussed. We're proposing to increase the general admission and group rates of a moderate increase of $1 per ticket. The facility rental increases are proposed to be between $50 and $100 per hour for private rentals, and $5 for private cabana rentals, and an increase of $50 for traction rentals. There's also an addition of a new category for large group, full park rentals. Swim lessons and camps will increase $5 and $10 respectively. New this year, and per the council's request, we're introducing Vista resident rates for both general admission and for camps. And here's a quick slide that summarizes the actual prices that I just summarized. You'll see the general admission price from 1795 to 1895, and then you'll see the resident general admission price there of 1795, which is the, was the price in 2015, and we're proposing to hold the resident rate at the current level until the discount represents a 10% discount off of the regular price. It's currently proposed at 5%. This slide just quickly summarizes the rental rates that are proposed to change, and shows the increase of approximately $100 for prep, full park rentals, the introduction of the park rental price for the largest groups that rent the park, as well as the individual amenities that can be rented. Moving on to recreation, a quick summary of the changes include pretty much an overall increase of about 5% to camp registration, early childhood education, and recreation sports programs, and that's related directly to the increase in minimum wage. We're also requesting an increase of 5% in facility rental rates. And then, new this year, we're establishing, proposing to establish an hourly park use fee for organized open space activities, which are not city-sponsored. These are the types of activities like boot camps or fit-for-moms that are using the parks for private businesses, to use the parks to workout, and we've established a rate for that. In addition, we're also establishing an arena soccer rental rates for Bub Williamson due to the changes that are taking place there, and then reducing the cost for the Rain Tree Arena, because it will be smaller than the Bub Williamson facility. Here's a slide that summarizes the current, the 2015 rates compared to the 5% increase for 2016. For day camp and early childhood education. And then, this slide summarizes those same 5% changes for the various recreation sports And then, continuing on, the proposed, the current, and, these are the proposed rates for Rain Tree and Bub Williamson, as well as the proposed rates for the general park use that I discussed. And then, lastly, the current, current and proposed rates for the various rooms and facilities that are available to the community. Another slide. These are the proposed changes for the Rancho Buena Vista Adobe programs, which are under the recreation category, just that 5% increase for summer camps, as well as facility rentals. Moving on to senior services, we're proposing a 5% rental rate increase. In addition, we are removing the overall senior, senior rate table, which will streamline that rental process. Senior discounts of 30% are now applied by group. In addition, we're adding a cleaning fee, a kitchen cleaning fee of $61. Your packet shows that fee as $161. It's actually $61. That was a typo. In addition, we're updating the language for the group descriptions. And then, here is a slide that is also in your packet that summarizes the proposed changes compared to the current rates. Moving on to cultural arts, as Mr. Fortmiller mentioned, we did already discuss, and the council has approved the program shows, the ticket prices for shows, so this item relates specifically to facility rentals. Again, we're proposing a 5% increase to the facility rentals and adding additional categories for contracted technical staff, for specific equipment usage, such as a piano, projector, and sound console use. And then, there's a slide that shows the proposed rates for the Moonlight Amphitheater and the various uses there. You'll see the four items for the piano, projector, and the technical personnel, which will be billed at the actual cost the city has charged. The rental rates there for the AVO, as well, this is all in your packet. This is just a quick summary of the five-year rate amendment history. You can see that with the Wave Waterpark, we've had just moderate increases over the last few years. In 2015, that also related to a minimum wage increase. Senior services, you know, it's moderate increases over the last five years. Same for recreation, cultural arts, and the Adobe. Lastly, I'll just briefly discuss the policies and procedures, and just highlight the changes that we're proposing. Ultimately, we are proposing to change facility rental deposits for most facilities to $350 from $500, excluding the Morse-Bevan's Community Room, which will remain at $500, and the Rancho Buena Vista Adobe, which will remain at $1,000 deposit. In addition, deposits made by credit card will incur a credit card processing fee. And then, lastly, some other, there was some minor reordering of paragraphs, and we've also removed the word ceilings from one section to indicate that you may not decorate the ceilings. And that concludes my report. Myself, as well as our program managers are all available, should you have any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just had, I guess I'm looking for some clarification on a couple of things. I think I see it, but I just wanna be totally sure. So, my first question has to do with the field rentals. I wanna go through that. So, I see Group A recreational, there's no fee. So, does that mean Little Leagues, recreational soccer, Pop Warner?
Right, city, city-approved youth leagues.
There would be no fee for their rental?
Except for, except for lights.
Lights, correct. How does a $23 per player per season work for Group A? Is that?
That's on the competitive, which was the rate that had, like, five or six years ago, I believe, was established for competitive, competitive teams.
Is that going up?
That is staying, I believe, this, it's staying, that's, it's staying the same. That's, it's unchanged.
All right, then I assume B, C, and D group are the same? Yeah, okay, that's good. And what are we paying for lights right now?
17 an hour.
Yeah, which I think is reasonable compared to most cities.
That's pretty much, it's a direct.
Or in line.
Cost back.
Yeah. And then, I was looking at Biddy and Dunker's youth, is, are those prices going up? Is that the 5%?
Yes, 5%. I can go to that slide. You'll see that for the resident rate for ba, youth basketball.
That's for the season, right?
Mm-hmm.
All right. All right. Then I guess I have two requests. One, probably, I don't know, I think it's, would be a good idea, maybe, like, council members here will disagree with me, but I think we need to notify people why the rates are going up. I mean, I would like to see it posted somewhere that, the reason that, or when these flyers go out to these families, that one of the reasons we have to raise the rates is because of minimum wage. Whether it's a flyer or posted at the wave, I think people need to know how it affects them, and I would be in favor of notifying people somehow. I mean, and I think that makes, makes the blow a little bit softer for people, but also, you know, allows them to recognize the reasons that they're paying a little bit more for this. And then the second request, and I don't know if this is appropriate now, but I'm going to say it. We had a function at the Morris Vance Room, and I just noticed that the carpet and that was kind of stained. Is there, is this, what's the budget for that?
There's, there's a fee taken out of every rental to go towards carpet cleaning, and Public Works has it on a, I think, I believe, a monthly schedule to address the chairs and the carpet, the carpet stains.
And I might add that we are going to replace the carpet in the community room. We've selected the samples, and that is in process.
Thank you. I think that's good.
Yep, I noticed that, too.
Yeah, because, you know, I mean, we have tons of people come through there, and it's a representative of the city, and I think people want to know that we're taking care of that place, so.
The room is used more frequently than I think we anticipated originally, and so we expedited the replacement of the carpet sooner than we had anticipated.
Councilmember Campbell.
So first, I understand the minimum wage increases have increased our costs, but I think that's sort of a sad statement that we're paying minimum wage for such a large number of people per hour, that a one dollar an hour increase in the minimum wage results in such a drastic change for our operational costs. So I think personally, that's kind of a sad statement, that we're basically paying minimum wage results in such a large percentage shift.
It's also SDG&E, though, built, fees are going up.
Right, absolutely. It's not just minimum wage, but I do want to point that out, that not just with the parks and rec fees, but our general operations, that we have so many hours that are paid minimum wage. I think that's kind of a sad statement. But overall, on, sorry, just a minute.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Overall, I am opposed to the fee increases. I think that we can do a better job as a city providing additional opportunities to families within our communities to have access, especially the senior facility rentals for seniors. I was approached by several seniors over the past year that said, basically, they're small groups of, just a few people can no longer afford the rates that we were marking it up to. That was before these increases. And, you know, sixty-three dollars an hour for a nonprofit group to two hundred and twenty-one dollars an hour is out of reach for a lot of groups. And, you know, I've rented a city facility in the past. We have more hoops to jump through to rent one of our facilities than any other city or public facility that I've rented in the past, and that's not good. More paperwork, insurance certificate paper requirements, ABC alcohol issues. I mean, we want to make it, in my opinion, as easy and as streamlined as possible for people to know upfront. This is how much it's going to cost, and it needs to be a reasonable amount. You know, voters, residents, community members, they're all paying for our community rooms, our parks, our facilities, whether they're renting them or not. You know, Prop L, which built this facility, and the Morris Vance Community Room, people pay it every day when they pay their sales tax here in the city. So when I look at the costs to rent the facility, the add-ons that we do, the cleaning fees, the setup charges, the insurance costs, the per-hour charges, the deposit, it gets to such a high price that the vast majority of people who would have an interest in holding community meetings and community gatherings quite simply can't do it. They're not going to pay a thousand dollars to rent it for three and a half hours or four hours. So that's my personal take on it. I think we can do a better job of making facilities available when they're not at days that they're not in use, for community groups to have a place to meet, which, in my opinion, was one of the key points of making that facility not just for wedding receptions and fundraisers, but as a community facility. You know, the library for their facility, they're charged fifty dollars for multiple hours to use it. There's not a lot of hoopla to go through. There's not pages and pages to sign. If they can make it work, I think we can make it work, too. So I think we need to have a better examination of how we're renting our facilities, what the purpose, what we're trying to accomplish is going forward in the future.
Councilmember Franklin.
Do we know how much additional revenue that we expect to raise from these fee increases?
Yes, sir. It's mentioned in the packet that fiscal impact, we're expecting approximately a hundred thousand dollars in increases, in increase.
And what is that as a percentage of our current fee revenues?
Our overall revenue?
I think our overall department revenue is about three million.
That's about 3.3% increase.
In 14-15, our department as a whole was 4.9 million, and that includes things that doesn't necessarily relate to these fees, includes Moonlight tickets and other things as well. But as a whole, in 14-15 fiscal year.
Does that include any general fund money? Or monies that are, I mean, that's all general fund money, but does that include any monies?
Absolutely.
That are other than?
Absolutely, includes general fund money. The number that Ms. Belt gave you, if you take out the moonlight, which I'm assuming is somewhere in the 2.2 to 2.4 million range, that gives you the non-moonlight monies.
So, just saying, 2.2 million, so that's eight hundred thousand dollars in fee revenues? And we're going to raise, raise them by a hundred thousand? Does that sound roughly accurate?
On the fee revenues, I'm not.
I was just going to say, I have it kind of broken down by division. The bulk of the hundred thousand dollars actually comes from the dollar increase from the Wave Water, at the Wave Water Park. About sixty-five thousand dollars of that is coming from the increases specifically to the Wave. And then the other pieces, it's about twenty-five thousand through the recreation increases through programs and facility rental fees, to maybe twenty-five hundred dollars from the senior center, and then the bulk from the, from the Cultural Arts Facility Rentals.
Okay. So overall, the increases are pretty nominal. They're, I would, I'm at a few percent, even including the Wave, and once we take that out, we're, we're a really small decimal point. So, you know, I think it's important that we have modest increases on a regular basis, and one of the things that is a problem is if we decide not to increase for a number of years, then we fall into deficit situation, and then it becomes necessary to enact a large increase, which really creates frustration and, for citizens. So I agree, you know, the more of this that we can do, but looking at the percentage here, including the Wave, I'm at about 3.3%. Taking that out, it must be much, much less. And so, yeah, I think it's important that we, that we slowly increase to match inflationary pressures. Otherwise, we will find ourselves in a position to have to raise rates by a much larger percentage, and that would probably not be a good thing. None of us would want to do that.
If I could just address Councilman Campbell's comment about minimum wage. The salary doesn't just affect the person going from nine dollars to ten dollars. We also have across the salary table increases related to the minimum wage increase. So we do have employees at all different rates within, within that range.
And when we're talking about minimum wage, we do have a significant number of seasonal employees. Typically, high school students, maybe early college students that are employed with us for anywhere from two to four months. So it's not a, what I'd call a working salary necessarily. And in terms of whether it's decreasing expenses or decreasing revenues, we're trying to stay within the subsidy that the council has set for us. And so if the council wants to increase subsidies and decrease rates, then that's a conversation we can have, but that's not been the direction in the past.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You had said that the increase would amount to about a hundred thousand dollars per year. And we've talked a lot about minimum wage, and I know that we have increased fees already based on the increase in minimum wage. So I was wondering, what is the anticipated salary increase because of the one dollar increase in minimum wage for that same time period?
Sure. We did have an increase to fees previously related to minimum wage increases. This is a second minimum wage increase. However, based on the expenditures from 14-15 compared to projections for 16-17, that's a two-year jump. The difference between actual salaries and projected for 16-17 is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and that's a two-year jump. So we could estimate that the actual, because we're in the process of budgeting right now, we can estimate that it's about, I would, I would estimate seventy-five to eighty compared to the 15-16 actuals. Does that make sense?
Having the two-year gap in there, though, but in those two different years, we already did the increase, the one increase, correct?
Yes, ma'am. The, the reason I don't have actuals for 15-16 is because we're still in the second quarter of 15-16.
And maybe this was clarified, just to jump in real quick, is that minimum wage went up at two different times?
Right, I recall.
And so this is reflective of the second jump.
Right, I recall that. And I've said this before, and I think I say it every year since I've been on this dais, and I said it every year when I was a Parks and Recreation Commissioner, and it's the same thing that Councilman Campbell has said, that our residents, our citizens are already paying for these facilities, and the rates just keep going up and up and up. And they really are, not just as reflected in the one letter we have in our packet, but as people comment to us and make comments and other places and stop on the street. It really is becoming difficult for people to rent the facilities for the events that they want them to. I know, I applaud Councilman Campbell having rented a facility. I can't afford it. I tried to rent a facility here, and I personally can't do it. So I think it is a problem, and I'm not sure about having to, you know, regularly increase the rates just to, to, I don't want to get too far behind on things, but I don't think we need to just keep raising the rates and make, make the facilities out of reach for our groups and our community, especially when we're already paying for them every single day through our tax money. So I am going to, once again, be opposed to these increases.
And to repeat, but, you know, Mr. Johnson said, we're, our attempts are just to keep within the council's set subsidies, and so that's the direction we take when we do these modest increases.
If I might just follow up on that? You know, we spent the last council meeting, or the one before, talking about year-end monies and how to prioritize those. Maybe next year, year-end, we have that discussion again and think a little bit harder on what we want to contribute as a city to our Parks and Recreation Program on behalf of our residents.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Nope, Councilwoman Aguilera.
Oh, I didn't even notice. Yeah, I hate to see us raise rates for any recreation program, and I have, in the past, been opposed to raising rates. But at the same time, I also was here when we were trying to balance the budget, and that's a very difficult thing to do. And, you know, we are still subsidizing recreation in a big way, really. I think that we need to stay up with the times as far as when minimum wage goes up, SDG&E goes up. I think we need to have people pay for that, and people need to realize that that's, that's what they're paying for. I don't ever think we could make recreation something that's self-funded entirely, and we already do subsidize these projects or these programs. And there are some things that are available to the public that are paid for by taxes, you know? Sports park's been available for recreation programs, as I clarified earlier, with staff. We have our regular parks, Bringle Terrace, Wildwood Park, all those parks are available to the, to the public as well. A lot of the charges are actually for programs that sometimes make money at our facilities. And, you know, we oftentimes get numerous, I mean, right now, our Morris Vance Room is packed, and, you know, I was complaining about the fact that, you know, that it's not in great shape, or at least the carpet's not in great shape. I could only imagine if it was available for free or close to free, what that would look like, because I know I've been approached by many nonprofits to see if I could get that for free, and I often have to tell them that I can't get it for free either, so they can't get it for free. You know, like I said, I hate to see us raise the rates, but it is reality, and we have to, I don't want to ever get in a situation where we have to make drastic cuts or drastic changes to the rates, or, you know, cuts to programs in the future because of another recession. I think we need to stay on top of this. So I support staff's recommendation.
I agree with you, and I have to, you have to keep in perspective a little bit, I think, about cities, and cities, you know, we're basically here to provide public safety and roads and things like that, and recreation, when I, back when I was in Michigan, at our schools, they provided the recreation programs, after-school programs and things. The cities didn't. It was the, it was actually the schools that did that after the school. But, you know, our schools don't do that here in California for some reason, so.
Maybe we can look into that, though.
Turn it over to the State Unified School District. I'll make that motion, huh? Okay, so, okay, Councilmember Campbell.
To keep this sort of brief, I agree that we need to make sure that our programs don't, and facilities don't go into disrepair. But with that said, I think I would like to stop using the word subsidy for these programs. These are not, we're not subsidizing the programs, I just, we're not fully recovering the costs of operating these programs. You know, these are part of the essential services that the city provides. I think when we use the term subsidy, we're missing the point that we're just not fully recovering the costs of providing these services through the fees of those programs that we're providing. That said, I think, looking at the year-end fund balances for reducing the fees, creating additional opportunities, one of the things that I think we need to look at is providing ability with, especially within our recreation programs, for lower-income residents, for those individuals to have either reduced fees or fee waivers so that we can increase the breadth of participation within our community. That's a city service that we need to look at providing. So I think it, maybe at some point, at our goal, either our goal-setting workshop next year, or at a future workshop meeting, it would be wise, as a council, for us to go a little bit more in-depth into our philosophy for providing recreational opportunities, facilities, rental opportunities within the city, to Vista residents that are paying taxes, not only through their regular taxes, but through those additional sales taxes that were earmarked specifically for some of these facilities. And I'd also like to see a more comprehensive report on what other cities are charging, because I think we're not an island all on our own. We have other cities around that are in a very similar situation as we are, and I'd like to see. like to see how they work with their community to provide more opportunities for meeting spaces, community gatherings, and recreational opportunities.
Mayor, if I can just jump in real quick, just to respond to the year-end fund balance comments. Traditionally, we have used our year-end fund balance for non-operational issues, meaning one-time issues, and not for sustainability of programs. So just keep that in mind. I mean, we'll take that into consideration, we'll have those conversations, but that has been the direction in the past for year-end fund balance.
Okay, so, Councilmember Franklin.
I just wanted to briefly say I appreciate staff, including the recommendation of the council to offer resident rates. This is the first time for a lot of our programs that we're going to have a reduced rate for residents of the City of Vista, and I appreciate and applaud you taking that recommendation and making it a reality. Thank you.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Just to clarify, we have had resident rates for basketball and that, right?
Right, those have continued. This year, we added, for most programs, I think, except the wave. This year, we added the wave. And next December will come forward, we'll include the moonlight, we're working on having a resident rate for moonlight tickets as well.
So we are giving, basically, a discount to our taxpayers.
For facility rentals and all other programs, yes, and now we've added it for the wave.
For the wave. Fantastic. Okay. You know, I just can't support one-time monies for operational, I mean, because what happens when we don't have the one-time monies? And all of a sudden, the rates go up? Or we go into a deficit at that point? That's the problem with using one-time monies to reduce these fees. I think we need to keep it steady, and I think the way we have it set is pretty good. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we accept the staff's recommendation.
And close the public hearing?
And close the public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes three to two. Onto our last public hearing. Yay. Okay, this is the public hearing, Water Efficient Landscaping Ordinance Amendment. And Community Development Director John Conley will introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Michael Ressler, our principal planner, handled the update, and he's going to provide the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. Michael Ressler, principal planner, Community Development Department. The item before you tonight is a proposed development code amendment to the city's water-efficient landscape ordinance. The proposed amendment to the water-efficient landscape ordinance includes modifications to the definitions, applicability, as well as the regulations within the ordinance. The proposed code amendment has been designed to comply with Governor Brown's executive order to increase water efficiency standards for new and retrofitted landscapes. In order to comply with Governor Brown's executive order, the staff is recommending the following amendments to the city's water-efficient landscape ordinance, as well as the landscape manual. The amendment refines thresholds for projects that are applicable to the regulations. All new development projects that include landscape areas equal or greater than 500 square feet are subject to the ordinance. That includes residential, commercial, as well as industrial projects. The amendment also decreases the applicability thresholds for existing residential landscapes that are being retrofitted from 5,000 square feet to 2,500 square feet. It also reduces the amount of water that can be used for landscape irrigation purposes by adjusting the plant water use factor, as well as the irrigation efficiency. The proposed amendment provides more detailed information regarding soil preparation, as well as sampling requirements, requires dedicated water meters or sub-meters for non-residential projects over 1,000 square feet. And the amendment also includes a comprehensive reorganization of both documents in order to eliminate redundancy and create more user-friendly documents. The proposed update meets and exceeds the state's standards by making the plant factor and irrigation efficiency more restrictive. It requires drip irrigation in all landscape areas, and it also restricts the use of turf to areas that have recreation purposes. These strict standards are in lieu of the requirements for dedicated water meters, master shut-off valves, flow sensors, as well as master, or, excuse me, formal landscape irrigation audits for single-family residential projects. The comparison report before you indicates the state model ordinance requirements on the left side of the report, as well as the proposed code amendment on the right side of the report. In the event that the City Council doesn't approve the amendment, the city is required to adopt the state's model ordinance requirements. With that, staff is recommending the City Council approve an ordinance amending Chapter eighteen dot fifty-six of the Vista Development Code regarding water-efficient landscaping. I'm here to answer any questions, and that concludes my report.
Okay. I'll bet you I know what John Franklin's going to say. Councilmember Franklin.
Well, I had, I just got some information at the beginning of the meeting that there were actually some hooks that the state had to force us to adopt this. So just to be clear, pretty much every new commercial development in the city, because unless they're in the downtown area, most of them are going to have 1,000 square feet of landscape. So just about every new commercial development is going to suffer the cost of a new water meter, which is five to 7,000, maybe more, depending upon the size of the meter. So we're adding a significant new development cost, and there's no way around this.
Well, to clarify, we already require separate meters in industrial and commercial projects for sewer service requirements, so that we can track the amount of water that's used in landscaping versus the amount of water that's used in operations on the site. So it's already required. It's in the state ordinance as a new requirement, but in our code, we do it anyway because we bill people based on their water usage for their sewer bill, and so we want to separate out that landscape water so it's not included in the sewer bill. So all new, commercial and industrial, go through that process now.
I see. Well, then I would just say that the, what we're being forced to accept by Sacramento is a bunch of policies that are really going to add a lot of costs, and there's some good stuff in here. You know, I'm all about water efficiency and water conservation, but there are, you know, the increased requirements for homeowners to, if you're going to redo your landscaping, now to avail yourself of these policies, if it's, what is it, 2,500 square feet residentially?
That's correct, but I only want, I also want to point out that that would only apply to residences that are obtaining a building or grading permit. So if you're just doing your landscaping, won't apply.
Okay, that's good. All right. Anyway, I just want to register my general disapproval at Sacramento, forcing us to accept and enforce their henny-penny, self-imposed, self-created drought schemes.
Especially in Southern California, we don't really have a water problem here. We're actually dumping water, and the D cell plant comes online, and they can't do anything with that water because we're all under 25 percent, you know, lower water rules.
So we're not even allowed to take that water that we're generating and use it because it would exceed our consumption threshold?
Yes, so we can't use that water that we just put that D cell plant in for, so. Okay, Councilmember Campbell.
While we can sit here and debate the Sacramento politics all day long, I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing, introduce and adopt the recommended ordinances.
Deputy Mayor Aguilera. Oh, no, Councilmember Aguilera. Oh, I got to get that out of my head.
I thought I heard something about more restrictive, though, than the state. What were you referring to?
So we agreed to, the state ordinance requires residential, single-family homes to include a second meter, to have flow sensors, to have a landscape irrigation audit, which would, as Councilmember Franklin pointed out, increase costs and time for anyone that wants to build a single-family home. While we are requiring it in commercial and industrial applications and in subdivisions, this typical single-family homeowner, we felt, should not have to go through all that. So in an effort to avoid those requirements, we increase the efficiency standards for the types of irrigation and the amount of water that you use for single-family homes that have to go through this process, so that they can avoid going through that dual-meter requirement.
Second meter.
And the landscape audit.
Okay, so it's more restrictive, but it's probably more beneficial.
Right, it avoids the requirements that would otherwise apply. That was recommended by our landscape architect, who's been working with some other cities and implementing their ordinances as well.
All right. Well, I also would like to register my opposition. But I guess you found out there's some hooks, so I don't know what those hooks are, but let me know later.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was going to ask the same question. What were we doing that was more stringent than the state of California? And I agree, and it needs to be said, that the executive order, I disagree with it completely. I disagree with Sacramento mandating what we have to do as a city, especially since we do not have a particular water shortage here in San Diego County. We've done an exceedingly brilliant job in maintaining our water and being good stewards with our water here. And I think that, and I don't know if I'm saying this eloquently or not, but the only way we're going to get Sacramento to change what they're doing with this created political water shortage that they have, which has nothing to do with the drought, very little to do with it, in getting them to fund projects that have conveyance and storage, which we do not have right now, and then also allowing the counties and the cities who are doing a good job with their water to have a little bit of wiggle room in the restrictions, is when people, instead of getting in line and marching in lockstep with these ridiculous rules, is for the people to stand up and say, we've had enough. Sacramento needs to be accountable for this behavior, and until we can all do that together, it's not going to change. So I am absolutely adamantly, as you can tell, registering my opposition in having to do this. And I think it's important that we know what the hooks are, because I think they're significant, that if we refuse to enact this ordinance, adopting the state mandate that we agree with the county mandate, that there are some significant penalties that the city faces, which is why we have to do this, so that we don't incur that on the behalf of the people. And Mr. City Manager, do you want to go over what those penalties are?
For this ordinance in particular?
Sure, we can start with this one. There's a whole list.
I think what Mr. Conley said earlier was, you know, if we don't do this, then residential properties will be forced to put in a dedicated meter, they'll be forced to go through a landscape audit, shut-off valves, and flow sensors.
Okay, but, okay. I thought there was a particular penalty for the city for not adopting the ordinance.
Which you might be referring to is.
Is the stormwater?
Is in the stormwater, which was C3, which we could have been fined up to $10,000 per day if we didn't go forward with that.
A day. That's 10,000 per day, yeah.
Thank you very much, and I thank you for the work that you've put into this, and I thank you for trying to find a way to help our residents out a little bit on these restrictions. I appreciate it.
So I have a motion. Did I get a second? If not, I'll second. I have a motion and a second, I guess. And close the public hearing. It's getting late. That motion passes unanimously. So now we are on to oral communications. Each speaker is given three minutes to speak on matters that are not on our agenda, and Tom Cohen.
Tom Cohen, I come from the city of Escondido, where we have started with four of us, and we're up over two, probably up to about 250 people plus organizations now forming a North County Stand Down. The sheets like these are coming to you now. But we have the support of various veterans groups, American Legion, VFWs, both Supervisor Horns, Supervisor Roberts. We are working with Palomar College on this. And what we're trying to do is set up a North County Stand Down for our veterans that are homeless. That will stretch the 78 corridor this year, and hopefully cover more of the North County next year. We're tentatively scheduled to have it in October at Palomar College. There are some things that have to be worked out, but I am reaching out to each city to join us in this, and I will probably come back and ask for $25,000 contribution at some point next year. But if you have any questions for me, feel free to ask them.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Maybe later we'll have questions.
Okay, I'll be back later to ask for money.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I got to go home and eat. You guys keep late hours.
Thank you. Okay, that's our, we only had the one oral communication, so I will do a mayor's comments, and then I'll go to all of you guys. Let's see. First, a new Aguahariana Creek pedestrian bridge along the Buena Vista Trail has been recently completed, connecting a very popular pedestrian loop in this open space area, and I've gotten already lots of comments on that, that they're, you know, happy with it. Our holiday toy drive for HMLA 369, the city's adopted Marine Corps unit and their family members, is underway. Drop off a new unwrapped toy downstairs in our civic center here in our lobby at any time before the end of the month. I know that troops and their families, they really appreciate it. Santa at the Adobe is this Saturday, December 12th, from 10 until 3:00 PM, 10:00 in the morning until 3:00 PM. Five-dollar tickets are sold at the Rancho Buena Vista Adobe gate, and information is available online at cityofvista.com. The shop and win holiday shopping program is back again this year. For every $5 of sales tax dollars generated at Vista retailers between Thanksgiving and the final drawing on December 23rd, the participants will be entered into a weekly drawing for prizes, and they're good prizes, so learn more at thecityofvista.com. You save your receipts of the businesses, and I think that includes restaurants, doesn't it? Do you know if it does? Last year included restaurants, and so you save your receipts and then turn them in, and you'd be eligible for the drawings. And this is our last city council meeting of the year, so I want to wish our city council, our city staff back there, and the Vista community, happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year, and we will see you in January. I can't believe it, is it going to be, we don't see you till January? Wow. That doesn't mean we don't have other meetings, unfortunately. We don't get the month off. Okay, we'll start with Mayor Protem Amanda Rigby. Deputy, I can't quite get it right, can I, tonight?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Start over. Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you. First, I want to say thank you to everybody who is still here, and I see some students here taking notes for school. Thank you to staff back there behind the poinsettias for all that you do for us. We really do appreciate it. I just wanted to say that the Christmas tree lighting and the Christmas parade were hugely successful events, and they were a lot of fun this year. And so kudos to everybody involved in making those events happen. So thank you for that, and I wish everyone a very, very Merry Christmas and a happy Hanukkah.
Deputy, I'm going to make you a deputy mayor now. I'll make everybody one. Councilmember Franklin.
Happy Christmas, everyone.
That was easy. Councilmember Campbell.
As the mayor alluded to earlier, even though we don't have a meeting this coming up later in the month, and we only had one in November, generally, I think that makes it busier for some of us when we don't. Over the last month, there were a lot of events that I know we all went to, but a particular note, Councilman Aguilera and I attended the grand opening of the North Santa Fe Apartments, which is a great addition to Vista. We're very proud to have them in town. And also, I had the honor of attending the HMLA 369 Birthday Ball on behalf of the city, and that was a great event. And very glad that we have that great working relationship with that squadron, and hopefully in the future, we can expand that to other organizations, Camp Pendleton as well. Also, I had an interesting opportunity to be principal for a day at Rancho Minerva Middle School with the Vista Chamber of Commerce's educational outreach program. Well-attended event this year at a lot of the various schools. The chamber did a great job with that event. that event. So, wish everyone a happy holiday, or happy holidays and a happy new year coming up, and look forward to getting back to work in the new year.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Yes, thank you.
You got that one right.
First of all, I'd like to, I guess, re-thank or reiterate our thanks to Bill and Rick for their service, have combined, I think, 50 years of service between those two gentlemen. I think I first met Bill when I was on the board of Alta Vista Gardens, and, you know, Bill's been instrumental in making that happen. I don't think that would, I don't think Alta Vista Gardens would be there without, without Bill's help, and now I know Chuck and those guys are working on it, so I really appreciate that, that service that you've put in. And I'll miss Rick's talks when we go down to the North County Dispatch, so, he's a good guy, sorry to see him leave, he's one of those guys that definitely, his heart, you know, he's a fireman, you know, first, and, you know, he did it for the right reason, so I really appreciate that, and I got to know that about him over the last couple of years. So, and I just also want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a safe new year. Thank you.
Yes, and I, and I also do, I want to wish, I want to thank both Bill and Rick for all, they've done all of their years of service, and, and Patrick's going to cover Larry Nesbit, our captain back there, so I'll let him talk about him.
Well, I too want to say thank you to Rick Minnick and Bill Fortmiller, we're having a city function for them next week, so all of you are invited, and we'll be able to say goodbye, but both have been extremely dedicated to the city, their commitment level is top-notch, and a lot of positive things have occurred under both their watches, so they're to be commended, and congratulations on a well-deserved retirement. We also are losing, and kind of gaining, we're losing our Sheriff's Captain Larry Nesbit, who has been promoted to commander within the Sheriff's Department, and will oversee patrol stations, and so, we're very happy for Larry, he has done a great job with the city for the last 16 months, and we wish him well, and it's always nice to have a friend in the command staff to be able to call on when you need one. We are going to get Chuck Cinemo, who's a captain with the Sheriff's Department right now, and Chuck will be, Larry will be leaving the Vista Command on Christmas Day, and Chuck will be taking over on that day as well. And so, best of luck in your new role to Captain Nesbit in the back, he's, he's fulfilling his role right now and a little bit of the command role at the same time, so he's not sleeping too much. I wanted to let everybody know that the city offices will be closed on December 25th and January 1st, and so, that means trash will be delayed one day that week for all EDCO subscribers. And we recently, in October, did a community survey, and that survey is now available online on the city's website at cityofvista.com. And lastly, happy holidays to all of you.
I have one other thing we didn't mention, is we get, we're getting some new artwork along our creek walk, some horses, and, right?
That's correct, we got donated by anonymous donor.
They've been donated, by, yeah, anonymous donor, and also in Alta Vista Gardens, we're getting, I think altogether, we have like 11 new sculptures, I think the three horses along our creek walk, and then more in the Alta Vista Gardens, and, and I don't know the artist's name, I apologize, do you know, anybody know it? He's a very well-known artist, and he was up near, do you have his, their name? Anybody know their name? Anybody? No?
Sarah? Yeah, Sarah.
Sarah, okay, but he's very well-known, people have gone by his artwork up in the, I think it's in the Riverside area, do you know where it is? But, but near the freeway, and everybody goes by, and everybody notices, and so, and they sold the-
Principally on 15.
Yeah, at the 15, and, and they sold the property, so he had to move all of his artwork, and so we were, are getting a lot of it, so, go to Alta Vista Gardens, see the new artwork, and check our creek walk, soon it'll be there. So, with that, I will adjourn us.
Darrell Piper?
Oh, Darrell, I forgot the rest of the other table, I'm not, this is, I haven't had a meeting in so long, I forgot how to do this. So, our, yes, our, our city attorney, Darrell Piper.
Actually, a lot of that artwork is out where he has his studio in the Anzaburgo Desert, and we're very fortunate to get the work that's coming in off of, actually, the 79, the, around the lake that's there, that was taken over, the water district wanted some of those things removed.
Yeah.
But, wanted to say Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy Holidays, and wish everyone a very happy and prosperous new year.
Our city clerk, Kathy Galdes.
I'll just reiterate, Happy Holidays to everyone, and we look forward to seeing you in the new year.
How about Amanda, Assistant City Clerk? She says Happy Holidays, too. So, now, now I'll adjourn us, now we're adjourned again.